Good afternoon. It is one o'clock on October 17th. Calling the briefing meeting to order. We have a packed agenda today. We have a packed agenda today, so we have to try really hard to stick to the time requirements. The question was asked of me before the meeting started. When is public comment? It is not until the end of the meeting. So after we're done with the Florida Safe Schools Assessment Briefing, we will take public comment and the attorney will address that at that time. I'd like to jump right in to the first item on the agenda, which is naming of high school M-M-M. And that is Ms. Stillwell and Ms. Watson.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
So it's been an exciting couple of weeks. We have been working on the M-M-M naming, and this is the fun part of the job. So just a quick mention of the timeline. In August, we created a survey. We went ahead and we followed, just like we did for Bonita Springs High School, kind of the same process that we used, which you all were familiar with. You kicked off the survey for us at a board meeting, and I think by the end of that board meeting, we already had 60 submissions within that timeframe. So it was obviously a very popular survey. We deployed it during the month of September to community groups, staff, parents, media, and also on all of the district platforms. We sent out a school messenger. We had it on our Facebook page. We had it on our district website and all that. And the media picked it up and helped us out. And then we analyzed the survey. We had 2,000-plus submissions. I think when I went back and I looked at the briefing that Mark Mora did during Bonita Springs, we maybe had about 800. So we went way up, which was awesome. So we had a lot of community input. We narrowed the top choices down, just like we did with Bonita. We picked 10, but in this case, because we ended up having a tie, a three-way kind of tie, we went with the top 11. And at that point, we convened our ad hoc committee, which was district employees and community members, and we met to kind of discuss the results and compare them to board policy. And so I just wanted to take a minute and thank the folks who are here from the committee who came. We had a number of community members on there, and it was a very fun discussion. It lasted almost three hours, I think. And it was just, by the time it was all over, everybody kind of agreed on the recommendations moving forward. And that's where we are today, is the presentos.
Can we ask them to stand so we can recognize them?
Sure, please. Do you want to introduce yourselves real quick?
Darren Watkins from Alba, and also vice chair of the Construction Advisory Committee.
Frederick Morgan from...
From everywhere.
It would take you a while to go through those. I'm Doug Banks, a 15-year resident of Gateway. I sit on Board Superiors for Gateway Service history. I also have four boys in Gateway that three of them could potentially attend this high school.
Thank you for your... We also had another parent from Lee High Acres Middle School, and then a gentleman named Victor Serna, who owns a local company and has also represented the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. So it was five community members and seven district folks that sat on the committee. So like I said, we had a lot of good discussions. So the top vote-getters in the survey that we did, and this is them from top to bottom, like I said, we cut them off after 10, but there were 11 up there. So when you see a little asterisk after the name, it's because basically what we did is we took that name plus any variation of that name. So if it said like Gateway Senior High School, we calculated that in with Gateway High School. There were a couple that were like Gateway Community High School. We calculated that in with Gateway High School. And the committee members had all of the variations when we went through and looked, so that we could look through those and kind of see what the other options were that people had presented. But these were the top vote-getters. And as I said, when we went through, and what we did is we compared them to board policy, and then from there, we decided to make a recommendation in the top four that were the committee's recommendation or coming to you today. So right off the bat, there were ones that we could easily say that weren't going to come to you because they were not part of board policy, or they didn't adhere really to board policy. And you can see what those are up here. Robert E. Lee High School, Donald Trump High School, Barack Obama, Adam Jobbers, and Southwest Florida High School. Some of those were eliminated based on the individual section of the policy, where the school name should not be named until, for an individual, until a suitable time after his or her death. So there were a couple in there that were eliminated due to that. One was eliminated due to a name that was likely to cause controversy in the community, so we didn't want to bring that one forward. And we also didn't recommend Southwest Florida High School because we thought that was a little bit too generic. Southwest Florida is a number of different counties, and so when you say that, there was a bit of an issue of, well, where is that high school actually located? So those were ones that we, that did meet board policy, and we didn't want to bring them forward. There were two that did meet board policy, and we had a lot of discussion about these. One was Griffin High School. It was the second highest vote getter. And then the other one was Gateway Griffin High School. Griffin High School, the board, or the committee was a little bit concerned that while it does meet the criteria, there is some potential confusion on this one because the Griffin is the mascot of the charter school, and the Griffin is also apparently the logo of the entire Gateway community. So we were thinking that that might be a little bit too, too close to those two things. And then if we didn't think that we wanted to take the mascot name when we did Gateway Griffin, then not only were we just taking the mascot name, but we were also using the name of the other schools. So we felt like that was kind of doubled, and so we weren't, we didn't think that that would be a good one to move forward. So that left us with four. And so the committee moved forward these four recommendations in no particular order on this slide. Gateway High School. There was a lot of discussion about this one because, as you'll read in the board policy, it is not distinctive. So technically, if you go through policy, it doesn't meet policy. However, we did have Chris Saunders in the room to help us go through these names compared to board policy, and it was his recommendation that we could go ahead and move it forward because of the high number of votes that it got, as well as the fact that the policy says should. So it left a little bit of wiggle room in there. And like I said, there was a lot of discussion about this one. Thomas Edison High School was the, was the second one that met board policy that we wanted to move forward. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. High School, the third, and then Gabriella Nistrell was also the one that met board policy. And so those were the four recommendations of the committee itself to bring to you as names. So that's where we are today. I'll come back to this slide. But just for next steps, obviously, we're here doing the briefing. We have the ability to take a couple of questions. I've left a little bit of time if you had any, and then maybe some direction from the board, if you had any direction of how you would want to move forward. We do have some time for that. We could come back for another briefing and report back on the 31st. The goal would have be to bring the name at the action meeting on November 5th, so that you would all be able to vote on that, so that we would actually have the name of the high school before we did the groundbreaking. And as you can see, my celebrate on November 13th is the, is the date that we would like to do the groundbreaking. So with all that said, I'm going to go back to this one because this is probably the slide that I'll get the most looked at with potential discussion.
All right, so we'll go around twice. And remember, October 31st, we get to do this again, so we don't have to exhaust all comments today because we get a second shot at this. I think this is actually great, the way you've done it, because we can have the discussion. We have a week to gather, a week or two weeks, two weeks to gather more public input, and then we can have another discussion. So I think this is great. Why don't we start with you, Madam Chair?
Okay, thank you. I have two questions. The first one has to do with, I think this has come up before, with where the students will come from that will populate M-M-M. And I think the last answer that I received is, you know, open choice, so we're not really sure.
Fully certain.
Not fully certain as to where, but it would be any student in the East Zone.
Correct.
Okay. So it probably kind of redundant question, rhetorical not to answer, but I was thinking how many students that are presently at Gateway Charter High School that might move to M-M-M. So that, I mean, it's just something to think about. And I know I was over there for an event one day, and they were concerned about how many students they might lose, so that's something to think about. My suggestion going forward, and I know it's, it can be controversial, but I think when we get down to our last maybe two or three, all of the middle schools in the East Zone have a potential of having the students there being students at M-M-M. So my suggestion is that when we get down to the final three before we make our decision to ask like even the eighth graders, and we had talked about this of doing, like in one of their classes, doing a Survey Monkey, that you can't fudge it. You get one chance, and the students can't put in another name. They just have two names, and they would select, because they're the ones that are going to be going to that school. So to give them some kind of input and, you know, pride in the school that they may attend going forward. So I'm not sure when we would do that, but it's, it's a thought to kind of include them in it as well. Kind of statements more than questions.
Ms. Fisher?
Okay. So then, I was going to talk about that, the student input, but since Mrs. Gittens did that, I'm going to have to. And then I have one question. Since that time, where you have those tallies, is there an updated amount of tallies based on subsequent people emailing us and calling to show support for one name or another?
Not that I've seen, not that would make a difference in these numbers, for me.
Okay.
Now, if you've gotten those, that may be the case, but I haven't seen any of that, so that would be good information for us to have.
Exactly. That was a suggestion that I had made to the Secretary, that y'all should be getting these, because we've gotten, we've received quite a bit of, and I think that that's important.
That's good, yeah.
Yes.
That's awesome.
They're very important to have in the conversation today.
Yeah, if we could have those shared with us, that would be fantastic.
Mary, I'm sorry.
No, that's, no, that's fine.
Yeah, so that...
That was my only question.
Yeah, that was, that was mine, too. I wanted to bring that up today, that I think that those, because over the last week, I see, we've received many more recommendations.
The deadline approaches and so...
But we, yes, we know it's surpassed the deadline, but we still haven't made a decision, so I think it's important to be able to have those weigh in. For me, I was, as well as students' participation is really important. I'm excited to see that the community participated. I would like to have seen it, seen more, but, you know, I'm excited for the name change, so, the naming, actually. So that's it.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'm going to say ditto on the student input. I think that's really, really important. And just on, you know, since Gateway High School is not with, you know, I think that would be too confusing. In the best of all possible worlds, we would be selecting a school name based on preferably someone of color that actually has specific roots to Southwest Florida. You know, obviously, Thomas Edison does. I like the last two because they are minority, but, you know, I was actually even trying to look for some outstanding individuals that might have roots, and I guess that's a problem, because I really didn't discover anybody that might be worthy of a high school. So, you know, we do need to respect what the community has to say.
Ms. Jordan?
Well, I have to agree with my colleagues, too. I think it's great to have the students participate and the community as well. But I think that now that we have minimized it to four, if we could put that out to see what the change would be in that respect, I think would be very helpful for us in making, you know...
A final.
A final decision. That's it.
So what was, what was the opportunity up to this point for student input? Were they permitted to participate in the process up to this point?
Yes, so what we did was, is we, I sent a school messenger home to all the parents of elementary and the middle schools home, and I said in there, if you would please take the survey with your student. But to have it sent directly to students in their classrooms to have them fill out, we did not do, we have not done that.
Okay. And then in terms of the emails that we have received, I've received six, and they're all for the same name. But I'm wondering, how would we distinguish between people who send emails and people that participated in the survey? So this could be, we could be double dipping our votes here.
Yeah.
Could you talk a little bit about the difference between should and shall in a policy, please?
Yes, thank you. Well, actually, the policy basically provides for certain elements that you should be considering, should be considering. Doesn't say you shall or require to consider, but you should take them into account and make a determination based upon those elements. The distinction really is, when it says shall, you are mandated. You must consider those items. These are items that should be considered, are concepts, or, and it actually, the policy actually says, it has a number of items, but it doesn't, but it doesn't say that it's limited to those items that are identified. Those are items you are supposed to be reviewing and considering.
Okay.
Just as an example, Bonita Springs High School, actually, I believe, has 25 characters versus 23, or it's a little, it's a little bit different than what the policy is.
20 versus 25, yeah.
Yeah, there's a difference in, it's a, it's a slightly larger name than what the policy calls for.
And to that very point, if it was, if it was shall, and it had 25, when only, when only 24 would have been, that's not the numbers, but allowed, then you wouldn't be able to have named it that, by that policy.
And I do love the idea of student input, but I also love the idea of community input, because this is not just the students' school. We are trying really hard to get our communities more engaged in our school. And, and there's a lot of things that we vote on that are highly technical, and, you know, we'll get some feedback from the community. Student funding, for example, F-E-F-P, Florida Education Funding Program, 33-step program to determine how our students are funded, how our schools are funded. I don't expect the, the, the public to understand that, and sometimes they give us feedback, and I have to vote against that feedback because there's not necessarily a level of understanding there that's required to make a decision. This isn't one of those situations. I look at these numbers, and to me, it's a no-brainer. My job is to represent the majority of the people, and there's a clear mandate on, on that screen, from my perspective. That's sort of how I'm approaching this. So why don't we go around, Dr. Atkins, is there anything you'd like to add to the discussion questions, comments? No? Okay. And why don't we go around again, and then we can move on to the next...
Okay. In answer to, see, what I would like to see if we had time, is actually two more surveys, one to the public and one to students. And the reason being, on our first go-around with the public, it was not digitally done so that you could only vote once. So someone literally could have sat up all night and just voted. I mean, that's just the reality of, of doing it that way. The second time around, I would suggest doing it Survey Monkey style, because it does calibrate if you, if that email or that person has voted once, then they don't vote again. It, to me, it would be a clearer, you know, picture, because we don't know how many of those 815 are duplicates. So I would suggest that we do with the final four, let's say, do the public survey again and do it Survey Monkey style so that it can't be duplicated, and then do the one with the students after that. But I also do want to say, more than one time, I've been at the wrong Gateway school. I have gone in and checked in at the office, and I'm here for whatever. Well, we don't have you down. And to me, it is confusing, honestly, to have multiple schools within less than five miles that are all the same name. The other thing, and I, who was it? Ms. Vaughn mentioned about a minority figure and a local one, and I, I'm not saying we need to change what we have up here already, but I do know that Mr. George Mayo was one of the first Black teachers in Lee County, and he just passed away this week.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, it's just a thought, but specifically, the two surveys, I think, would help us to make a decision and to make them tighter so that people cannot vote multiple times.
Ms. Fisher?
So my only comment would be that I do agree that we need a controlled survey, and, and when you look at community input, I consider the students part of our community. That's all I have.
And I'll echo that. My other concern, because I've spoken to several, you know, law enforcement friends and family, and their concern is when someone in emergency, it could be a safety issue, and someone calls and has a threat or whatever, and they say Gateway, which school do they go, Gateway School, which one do they go to? And that little period of time could be detrimental to our students, and that's probably my primary concern, is safety. And so, you know, which Gateway schools do they go to? And to have more than one is already, to me, an issue. We have two, and then we're possibly a third. So that's why, and then a lot of people, when I would explain it to them that way, they felt that that was very alarming. We don't need another issue, we don't want something like that to happen in Lee County where a child is, you know, not safe.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'm going to, by the time you're the fourth person, echo both, or all three things, that controlled survey, community again, and students, yes, they are part of our community. I hadn't really thought about what Ms. Jim and Ellie just said. That is really something important to take under consideration, and, you know, we have what we have, perhaps going forward, because we do have other schools that, that will be opening, that we should consider, you know, really researching who are some local individuals that have had, you know, a real impact over the years on education, the idea of this, this teacher. I was looking at different things, but I think this lady's still, she must be still alive, the, what's her first name? Blalack? Does anybody know who that is?
Blalack, yes, ma'am, I know. She was a part of the lawsuit.
She was the...
Wanted to go to Fort Myers High School.
She was, and I don't know if she still lives. Oh, I shouldn't be talking to you. Sorry. I couldn't help it. I mean, things like that, but I believe she's still, because I think this was 1964. But it's, it's just, to me, really important to look for people who have some kind of direct impact on education, maybe moving forward, keeping some of these, maybe some that don't get picked, keeping them in mind, not just throwing them away.
Well, for example, we have Ida S. Baker, First Principal Cacor High School, went on to work at the state level, the Department of Education. Carrie Robinson is another example of a local person. Of course, Ray B., Podworth, and Rema C. Page, those are all local.
And he's still alive.
Yes.
Oh, yes, he is.
So those are all some local examples of educators that have schools named after them.
And that's, to me, that's a, that's a good thing, because heaven knows, especially with our high schools, I was going back through, and, you know, we have South, and we have East, and we don't have West, but we have North, and, you know, and Bonita, and Estero, and, and so we haven't been super creative.
Don't forget Riverdale, they'll get mad.
Oh, no. Is there a place, Riverdale? Oh, see, I didn't even know, I mean, I know there's a school, but that was...
I'm just teasing you.
Is there a place?
No, there's no place in there.
Well, no, but it's like an area.
Okay. But anyway, we, you know, especially with our high schools, it seems like we haven't been particularly creative in coming up with names that have more meaning than just a geographical location.
Ms. Jordan?
Well, again, I just think that we, if you look at that at 815, that looks like a clear win, I mean, from the community. But Gateway Charter is Gateway Charter, and I think that they always put those together when they speak on Gateway. I know I have, and everybody that I speak to, it's always Gateway Charter, where this does not have that. But again, I think that we have no idea, you know, how many votes, you know, how many people that actually is. So if we do put that back out again, it allows us to take these four, hone in on those, and, you know, see what comes out. And if that's, you know, if it prevails, and that's the way it's...
And they're also on elementary? Gateway Elementary?
Mm-hmm. There should be the third.
Correct. Do we have the capability in the next two weeks to do a controlled survey?
We'll make it happen.
Excellent. And then, Dr. Atkins, could you get with Mr. Parfit and have him speak with the Sheriff's Department regarding any safety concerns with repetitive names for schools in that area?
Yes.
And to report back to the board on that?
Absolutely, we'd be happy to.
And just one clarification on our part. Do you only want the, Mrs. Gittens had said just eighth graders. Do you want to go to sixth, seventh, and eighth in the middle schools in the East Zone, or do you, would you prefer just eighth graders? Is there a preference?
What do you think, Ms. Watson?
I would say eighth graders, they'll probably take it more seriously than your sixth graders. And then, you know, if we can include that in the process going forward, too, because we're going to be naming a lot of schools. And so you've had a chance to hear from everybody except Ms. Morgan, so maybe when she gets back, sit with her and find out her concerns, and then include that in the process so that we have, it's nice and smooth.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
This is only the second time that we've used the policy, which was new in 2015. So I was going to try to do a little history on how we named schools before 2015, because I don't have those answers, because that was before my time.
That was actually my question. What was the impetus behind the creation of that policy? Do you know? Does anyone with history know?
I think we, we just wanted to have a policy around naming. That's why we did that, because we didn't, we weren't, we're not aware of any policy or procedure leading up to this, that was, I think it was, a lot of it was...
Community and...
Yeah, there was some feedback. Superintendent had a lot of sway in terms of what?
And board members.
Yeah, and board members. So I think it was a much more informal mechanism. We felt that it should be more formal and established, and that's why we went forward with this policy.
Great. Are you excited?
Very.
Very excited, good. Excellent. All right, I think we're good for now.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to item number two, policy 2.16, school environment safety incident reporting. Pre-brief, pre-briefing on Cessor, and that is Ms. Watson again. No, no, it's not.
She's going to be really surprised.
Good.
Dr. Savage.
Dr. Savage and Mr. Parfit. Is Mr. Parfit here?
Thank you all. No, it's not the community. No, no, I just have to explain why this, why...
I just understood because of eight...
He's on the ground. He's actually here in the building. Mr. Parfit is actually here.
Would you like me to move on to another item?
No, no, it's quite all right. I'm happy to do this. So what we're referring to is the acronym of Cessor and this particular board policy. This is just to bring us in accordance with state law in the most recent, for the Marjory Stone Douglas Act. This, you'll probably recall, there were a number of policies were updated over the summer months, specifically to be in accordance. This was one of the very last revisions and adjustments that had to be made, specifically to ensure that, that there was a Cessor policy here, and that it met the criteria that the state would expect in this particular case. So it's very, very straightforward.
Great. Court members, any comments, questions? You just saved us 14 minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is policy 4.20, really? Is it really 4.20? Medical marijuana, low THC cannabis use for qualified students in schools.
Okay, don't come up with your smiles.
We just found out the policy.
She's just grinning.
And it looks like we have...
She's the medical...
Mr. Bradley and Ms. Whip?
Yes.
Is that how I say it?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Take it away.
We are here to present to you the medical marijuana, low THC cannabis use policy for students. This is in response to a state law that was put into place about 27 months ago. And this policy covers basically our informal process that we've been doing with one mod, with one modification. Up till now, we've informally been giving students an accommodation to leave campus to receive low THC marijuana, as long as they're prescribed and they are qualified for that. This policy does make one change, and that would allow the parent or caregiver to bring the medication and administer it to the student, and then take it off campus. At no time will any of our personnel or contractors be allowed to touch, house, hold, or administer medical marijuana to students.
Great. So why don't we go, this is one I think everybody's going to want to comment on, so why don't we go around? I'll start here. Ms. Jordan?
I believe that Khyer already has something in place like this, and it's the same process where the parent or guardian has to come and administer it.
Yeah.
So, you know, I would definitely... So, you know, I would definitely be in favor for that versus one less.
Ms. Bond?
I have a question. What is our policy on, let's say, if a child is on heavy-duty painkiller-controlled substance or anti-anxiety medication that are also controlled substances? What's our policy on that?
You want to talk from that side, and I'll talk from the district side.
Sure. So that is to be given at home unless, for some reason, prohibiting them from taking it during school hours would interrupt their education in some way. So for the most part, those heavy-duty sedating-type medications are given at home after hours because the effect of that medication would inhibit them from being able to perform during the school day.
Okay, so they would not be housed in the nurse's office either?
Correct.
So then that would make this.
Consistent.
Consistent with that?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
Great, Ms. Givens?
So I'm just curious, how many students actually do we have in Lee County that is utilizing this?
So at this time, I know through 504 that we have four students that are receiving an accommodation to leave campus to receive medical marijuana.
Okay, and will those parents come in and issue it, I mean, you know, give it to them with this new policy?
They'll be given an option.
So they'll, okay, so yeah, obviously they have the option. But, okay, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so what is the number of that policy that addresses other medications?
I'm not sure of the policy number, no, so I would have.
Okay, because, well, I looked under students in our policies, but I don't see that.
We'll check on that.
Yeah, we can get back to you.
Okay. And so then if parents or guardians are coming in and administering medication, there's no liability to the district then, right?
That is correct. Because we will not be participating in it, we will not be storing it, we will not be administering. We are only providing a space for them to be able to give the medication.
Right. And so, we are in no way responsible for monitoring any of that? Because you'd have no way of determining what was in it?
Correct. And I'll go back to, I was going to add just a piece. If at any time we see students are returning to class intoxicated, then we will administer our conduct requirements, which would be to contact the parent and have the student sent home.
So then with the number of kids we have taking medication at school, I mean, I think it's really important for us to look at that policy. And if one doesn't exist, I think we need to have further conversation.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay, I'm a little confused. You're saying that an adult then would need to come to school and literally like sign out the student in order, and then they would go off school grounds?
So currently under 504, that's what's happening. We provide an accommodation in their 504 plan that this parent can come and pick up the student, sign out, go off campus, administer medication, bring the student back. This policy will change that in that it will allow an adult, parent, guardian, or designated caregiver to come onto the campus with the student go into a private area under the principal's designation and administer the medication and then leave. But we can't house it or store it on campus.
And will there be a district employee there while they are?
Probably close by, but we'll probably allow that privacy.
Okay. So an adult has to be involved with the process?
Yes, ma'am. And one that we know about will have a process where we will know who it is, what's the relationship to the child, and make sure that we have copies of the qualified card that the student is able to receive that medication.
Because that could get real tricky. My auntie that I really like is coming, you know. Yeah, that was the part with the adult and signing them out and following all of that process. Okay, I have to think about.
Ms. Fisher?
Okay, so I found the policy, it's 4.22, section five. And so, regarding the low THC medical marijuana, how does that differ from other medications that may have various side effects? And do we need a separate policy for that per the state or?
We do need a separate policy for this because regardless of the type of marijuana that it is, and here we're talking about pretty much CBD oils, capsules, we're not talking about anything smokable or vailable. This is simply CBD-type medications. And because cannabis is still federally illegal, this law requires a special policy. There is a clause in here, if you notice, that if at any time federal government says that this is not legal, then the board has the right to suspend it immediately.
Thank you.
So that addressed, you've addressed both of my concerns. My concerns were low THC and smokable, and that's not permitted, and the potential federal issue. So, I mean, I don't have any concerns with it. The number of students who qualify is very, very low. You mentioned Collier, are there any other districts' policies that you looked at?
Yes, this actually came to us, we crafted this from three model policies that were recommended by the state. And so, we looked at Miami-Dade, Broward, and Volusia's policies. And then Mr. Williams had also taken a look at Alachua County's policies. So we did kind of pull the best of the policies and crafted this according to our needs here.
Great. And do you have any comments since it's a policy?
Only to the extent that this is a, a policy is required by Florida statutes. So you have no choice as a district, you must adopt a policy to allow for this use. So 4.20 would in fact allow for it and is compliant with the statutory requirements.
Great. Dr. Atkins? Any other comments or questions from the board?
How long have the other districts that you looked into, how long have they been doing it?
So some started, Broward started pretty quickly after the law came into place. I believe they were part of the impetus for the law coming into place. So there have been some that have been working on their policies for the last, I would say, twenty months or so. But they've also been going through revisions over the last year in particular because of different changes in the law and the way things are working.
And any specific issues that they've encountered?
None that I've heard of specifically. Again, because it's very clear that this is low THC, and we're still very clear in our code of conduct that THC is not permitted and vaping is not permitted as per this policy. I believe that was one of the clarifications that came back to, because there were some requests for vailable CBD.
And actually, we, it would be almost an honor system with the parents or the adult to say that it is not, you know, above the level of what we are saying.
Correct.
And so, that's where on our end, if we do see the student going back and being intoxicated in the classroom, we would invoke our code of conduct at that point.
And then, okay, so if you did and you invoked your code of conduct, how would that actually work? Because then we're saying that we are invoking this upon you because you're intoxicated, but we gave you permission to have.
We gave you permission for low THC.
Yeah, this much.
So if it comes back, and again, just like any other medication.
It just seems so, I mean, I get it, it just seems like it would be very hard to police, let's say. That's a bad word, but you know what I'm saying? You know, it's like you can have a five-milligram, but you can't take a ten-milligram.
Well, and it would also be similar to if we suspected a child was under the influence, and then we found out, well, they had just taken too much of their ADHD medication or their anxiety medication. That we can't control because that was done at home. But we can kind of control their behaviors or what we suspect that could be misuse in the school setting and would then render them, you know, intoxicated during the school day.
So perhaps with the signage of the adult that's coming in, something that says so-and-so will take this and only this amount and that type of thing?
And they do have to have a prescription.
So that makes them liable?
Right, right. It can't be a street drug that they're bringing in. Has to be something, well, I guess it could, but in theory, yes.
We've got kids watching.
So that was a question that I had, is the monitoring. You know, making sure that, so, because I would imagine they would have to have the proper, you know, the prescription, but also like the process, what would hap, you know, will paperwork be, you know what I mean? We just don't want the grandma coming in and mom coming in one day and the dad. I mean, I don't know how you monitor, control who's coming in and administering, and how's that, you know, is it going to be under the 504? So that was, like, how does this play out? What does this look like?
In the policy, it actually reads that there has to be a designated caregiver that has a designated caregiver administration card, which is part of the prescription.
It's eighteen and all that. Just want to make sure that we're following those guidelines though. That, you know, the policy really strict.
Now, Ms. Gittens, I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I thought that Ms. Fisher had her hand up.
She does.
Okay.
Ms. Fisher? Got it going on her.
Okay, well, a couple of things. So I didn't see any reference to age in here, and what about emancipated students? And secondly, in a recent presentation with the Drug Free Coalition, some of our law enforcement partners explained how they really don't currently have a test that would let you know what the level of THC is and that different people react differently to different doses of medications. So I'm a little bit concerned about if a student comes back in and you think they're intoxicated. I think there's liability there, and I think that there's room for more research because that could lead to issues. When we're giving permission for an adult, a responsible adult to administer that, and we have no way of determining that they are intoxicated because they've taken more than low THC, and do we even define that? What that means? Because I don't know that there is a definition for that.
There's a definition by state statute as to what would be allowed. And our policy is conforming with that.
Okay.
It references the statute number 381.986.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. My other issue, and I just thought about that, was the, what happens when the student is over eighteen? And they're asking to, they wouldn't need the primary caregiver to come and do that. And if they're, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you can do a lot at eighteen. Like, I would write my own notes when I turned eighteen because I could, because I didn't feel like coming into school. I was one of those, so, I mean. But I was old enough to do that, so they were lucky that I was there, is what I figured out. You know, at that point in time, that was when I was a smart aleck, but, you know. So I'm just, I can see that there are people like me out there that's going to come to school and say, hey, today I want to do this.
So I'll go back to kind of the mechanics of the way this works. This is allowing a caregiver to bring marijuana onto a campus and then take it off campus. We would not allow a student to bring marijuana with them regardless of age.
Well, that's, I'm just, people don't push it.
So if it's an emancipated student and they have an accommodation in a 504 plan to leave campus, we will still have.
Great, thank you.
I was just going to say, it's pretty self-explanatory, it's cut and dry on this. I mean, it's really good. I mean, I think you pretty much hit everything, and even with the dose. So the doctors, it's not that the parent or the guardian is going to decide what that dose is, it's going to be given through a physician. So they should be able to, whoever signed that card, know what that dose is. You're not going to overdose your kid with cough medicine. So it's the same thing. But no, thanks, this is, I think it's really good.
Great. I think we're all set. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Up next, we have SIP, Slow Improvement Plan from Trafalgar Elementary.
That's a happy group.
Lisa Murphy, principal, and Trafalgar Elementary School staff, who I'm sure we're going to meet by name.
So while they're doing that, again, this is what we were wanting to do, was to share school improvement plans with the school board so you see, you know, really what's happening with our district strategic plan on the ground within our schools. Trafalgar is, Elementary is a great example. They have some really, I think, super results. But, so hopefully this will give you a little insight in terms of how they made that happen and then what they're doing for this particular year, so. This is why Ken is nearby.
Do you want to introduce your team?
Sure.
Mr. Rosenkrantz.
So I'm Lisa Murphy, I'm the proud principal of Trafalgar Elementary. And I've brought several people with me because I truly believe that a leader is only as great as the people that they're surrounded by. And I'm very fortunate to have some amazing support at my school and my leadership team that works with me. So I will let them go around and introduce themselves.
So my name is Michelle Stanford, and I'm the assistant principal.
I'm Crystal Engelhardt, I'm the school counselor.
I'm Kelly Brooks, I am gifted resource three days a week, and I am math coach two days a week for the first time, which I'm very excited about.
Hi, I'm Donna Bennett, I'm the reading and the media specialist.
Hi, I'm Marlo Brownfield, and I am resource teacher for three through five. And this is my first year, very excited about it. And I'm also assistant testing coordinator with this Bennett.
So thank you for having us this afternoon.
Can I ask you, the second person in the blue? I'm terrible with names, tell me your name again.
Kelly Brooks.
Did you do a podcast? You didn't do a podcast? See, I told you I'm terrible with names. Yes, and.
And you're a media.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
My name's Kim Bizzy, I'm an ELA coach here at the District Doctor's for Curriculum Instruction.
Okay, so I wanted to give you just a little bit of background for why we are so excited to be here today and to be celebrating our A. So we actually earned ninety-one school grade points this past school year, which was huge, we're the second highest point earner in the school district. Manity Elementary, I believe, had a hundred and eight. So we weren't too far behind them. Okay, so the school grade, you know, is based on grades three, four, and five and from seven categories. And the reason why we were so excited to earn those ninety-one points is the year before that, our school grade actually dropped to a C. And that's kind of the elephant in the room, and people are like, well, how did that happen? Why did that happen? Because we were an A for so many years. So I can only tell you some reasons that I think it may have happened. One, I think that it's very easy when you're an A school to become very complacent with that. Like, we're an A, once an A, always an A. Two, new administrator. And also, over time, we had been noticing in our data some challenges with meeting needs of our lowest twenty-five percent making learning gains. Proficiency has always been the bread and butter of Trafalgar Elementary. That's always a category, an area, that we always do very, very well in. And with the changing population at our school and some different needs of some of our students, we've had to really adjust our thinking and really make some changes to meet the needs of some of those students that we are now seeing in the lowest twenty-five percent. So what I have put up there for you is the 2016-17 in each category, where you can see that was the year that we were an A. And then 2017-18, that was the year that we dropped to a C. And then in red, I have put our points that we earned this past year to go back to an A. So you can see in every. So you can see in every single category, we actually increased this past, past year, which was amazing, outstanding, and just so proud of all, everybody in our school that worked so hard to do this. Again, if you look at our, on the left-hand side, these are our proficiency areas. So that's ELA three through five, this past year seventy-one percent, math three through five, seventy-five percent, and our science, sixty-eight percent. So those are areas that we do very well in maintaining. Learning gains, that's overall learning gains. And what that means is that can be level fives, maintaining a level five. Level fours, have to stay a level four but increase by one point. So it's not just lower level students making learning, it's all students making learning gains. And we jumped significantly at ELA, eleven points, and math, twenty-five points. That was like, woo-hoo! And then, and then here is our, our area that we are continuing to focus on, is our meeting the needs of our lowest twenty-five. So we increased forty to forty-seven percent this past year. We would really want to be higher than that. We would love to be a hundred percent of all of our students making learning gains. And then in math, again, math was our year last year. We increased twenty-one points again with our learning gains for our lowest twenty-five percent. So lessons learned. So when you have been a school for many, many years and then you drop to a C, listen, you learn, you, you grow in many, many ways from that experience. And it sounds terrible to say that that can be a good thing, but it can be a good thing. Because it really causes you as a school to pause and reflect on what are some really great things that we have going on? And where are some areas that we really need to improve upon? So first, we learned that just because you've always been an A doesn't guarantee you'll always be an A. We learned that change is good and that it allows new perspectives and promotes growth. And what we learned as Team Trafalgar is that Team Trafalgar has grit, that we have courage, follow-through, resilience, and creativity. We are not a Title I school, so we do not have lots of extra people. So you had to be very creative with the people that you have and where you put them, where you're going to get the most bang for your buck and the most support, your teachers and students at your school. And of course, our school worked very hard, but we absolutely could not have done it without supports that we received from our district. Ms. Fletcher was a huge support, first year as a principal, so she spent a lot of time coming in and checking on me and just really encouraging me along the way. Dr. Guzmanberry, allowing me to have the next person up there, Ms. Kim Bisbee, who was a, worked at Trafalgar Elementary for many, many years before she decided to go work for the district office. And so already had that, was already part of her family, she's already part of the Trafalgar Elementary family. But she spent a lot of time at our school this, that year, last year, really working with ELA and our PLC process. And then the math department, the SE department, and the science team. So, I mean, it was like, what, our mindset was, come, come to our school. We want other people's perspective. And so it definitely paid off for us.
I triple dog dare you to say his name.
I'm not going to say it. That's why I said math team. Nick, I call him Nick.
Mr. Nick.
So as you can see, we cannot sit on our A. Every year, we pick one word to focus on that keeps the year going and that, you know, during PLC times, during faculty meetings, we just go back to this one word. And our word this year is momentum. And some strengths to maintain, of course, is our school culture. And at Trafalgar Elementary, there is not a lot of teacher retention. A lot of the teachers that we have there have been there for a very long time. And so that is huge. We definitely work on developing a positive school culture. We have students that are involved in clubs, and so of course, they have that ownership and that love for our school. And then also, we are a PBIS school as well. And just last week, we even had our first quarter PBS celebration and the kids got to eat outside, and so they enjoyed that. Some additional strengths to maintain are, we are having data chats with the teachers. And so Ms. Murphy and myself meet with all of the teachers and we go over the data and students' strengths and weaknesses. And then teachers also have data chats with the students. We are really focusing on those high-yield instructional strategies. We've already had our awesome Kim Bisbee out at a faculty meeting and she's trained the staff on distributed summarizing. And so thank you again, Kim, for that. We are a Kagan model school. We're also an iReady pilot school. And we departmentalize in fourth and fifth grade. And so we really, we have picked the teachers to really teach on their strengths and those two grade levels. And then also, we are a leader in the school. And positive momentum means knowing your students. And so this is all about relationships. And so Ms. Murphy and myself, we are very involved with going into the classrooms and visiting the classrooms to be able to, you know, see all the great things that the teachers are doing. We, we celebrated that picture there with the, with both of us is all of the students that scored perfect scores for the FSA. And so we recognize them. And, and then we have eagle of the week, so we celebrate student successes. We do positive phone calls home. That's really great with building relationships and just to recognize those students, they, you know, just feel so excited. And along with the parents too, to receive a positive phone call during the day. So positive momentum means teamwork, planning, revising, rethinking, and change. And there you have a picture of, of our fourth grade team that's meeting during PLCs. Because of course, you know, a PLC is all about teamwork and planning and revising what they had. You know, looking at student data to be able to meet the, the students' needs and rethinking and change.
And this slide, I love the little quote up there by John Gordon. It's not your goals that will lead to your success, but your commitment to the process. And that's really what PLCs are all about. And I put this slide in there because this, this year, we are not introducing anything new as a district, but we're really trying to fine tune, trying, we are fine tuning our PLC processes. And so that is a huge focus at our school this year. Just really fine tuning the processes we already had put in place last year that helped us get to that A and just continuing to improve upon that. All right, so the SIP goals for this year, the reason why we're here. So that just gave, kind of gave you a little bit of a background where, where we're at now, where we're coming from. So I have asked my team to help me with the SIP goals because people that are sitting here are very often the people that are going to the classrooms and supporting the teachers to help us meet these goals.
Okay, so our first goal, I'm good. You can hear me right? Our first goal is written around math. And what we did was we looked at the lowest twenty-five percent of the students making gains. Last year, that group of stu-, there were forty-six percent of those students made, made gains. This year, we want to increase that number to fifty-four percent. And we base that number on the amount of students that made gains at the district level last year. So that's our goal this year, to, to have that lowest twenty-five percent, fifty-four percent of that lowest twenty-five percent make learning gains in math. So to do so, we're tracking how these students are performing on assessments. We're also using iReady, iReady data, and we're pouring over that data in our PLC meetings. And in our PLC meetings, we are looking at students that need to be pulled into a small group. And we have enough staff where we're able to go into the classrooms and pull small groups and really figure out where they're struggling and why they're struggling and target their needs at an individual level. What else? So, so basically, by working together in our PLCs, we have a fabulous staff that's very talented. And as Ms. Murphy said, they're departmentalized and did a really good job of placing teachers based on their strengths. So based on that and our small groups, that I'm, I'm confident, and we're confident as a staff, that we'll be able to reach our goal.
And I just wanted to say one thing. Mrs. Brooks shared that she is a part-time gifted teacher and a math coach this year. And so one of the things that we have really been mindful of is even though this goal was talked about, our lowest twenty-five percent students in math, she also is pushing into our higher math classes and supporting those students because we need to make sure that those students are still maintaining, you know, their level fives. We want them to stay level fives. And so that's been really cool that we've been able to do that. And she already has a relationship with a lot of those students because they're students that she usually sees in her gifted program. So we're not just putting all of our supports with the lowest twenty-five percent. We're also looking at our students that are proficient and we still want them to continue to make gains. And our second goal is to increase the percentage of our lowest twenty-five percent students making learning gains from the current forty-seven percent to the fifty percent as measured by the FSA for this coming school year in ELA, so our English Language Arts students. And the rationale behind that is that forty-seven percent made learning gains last year. And we want to increase that to the fifty percent for the coming year as measured by the district. And then you can also see it's fifty, fifty-three percent at the state level, which we would gladly take. And one of our focuses is going to be on fluency, and I'll touch on that in just a second. But as Kelly mentioned, the resource teachers and the coaches do push in to classrooms during intervention time and also other times. And myself, I push in with fourth grade, but our fourth and fifth grade students who are at least two years behind grade level, who are not on grade level, are using a program called Read One Eighty. And that is helping them both with technology pieces as well as literature and other, we're increasing their reading skills. Another resource that we're using is a program called HD Word, which teaches explicit foundational skills and phonics. So students who do not have phonics skills in order to read and comprehend, still need those skills in order to be able to read. Our second one is fluency as a focus. And I think a lot of times when we think fluency, we think, how fast can you read that passage? And that's not our focus. Our focus is text and meaning. So we're looking for the meaning that the students are reading. And through that, we're building their rate, we're building their tone, we're building reading skills. We're teaching them to pause at punctuation, we're teaching them to read for understanding. And then as far as expecting expectations, Ms. Stanford had mentioned, we do data chats with, with teachers and students. We have expectations at our school. And we follow those expectations by means of chats, either by formal walkthroughs from administration or even just in passing in the hallway. We, we monitor expectations, we model expectations, and we give students feedback immediately. We like the way that you're doing this, or boys and girls, you're doing a great job with this. They also keep leadership binders in their classrooms. Every student from K through five has a leadership binder that has their best work. And in fact, we have our student life conferences tonight, so students will be sharing those leadership binders with their parents or guardians or whomever comes to, to visit with them. Thank you. And I just wanted to piggyback really quickly. It's something that I am doing different at my school is the Read One Eighty program. I have taken that off the plates of my teachers. I didn't want to give them an additional program that you have to learn, an additional program that you have to monitor. So we have really been very strategic and creative, when I'm talking about creative scheduling, to allow Donna and also my MTSS specialist to be able to push into those rooms and to provide that instruction for Read One Eighty during their intervention time. So that was really great that we could do that for our teachers. Oh, I love again. Okay, so we do, we do have a proficiency goal. So increase the percentage of three through five proficiency students from seventy-one percent to seventy-six percent as measured by the twenty ELA FSA. So the reason why I picked seventy-six percent is that last year we were an A before we dropped, that's where our proficiency was. So the rationale was, even though we've seen a slight increase in our proficiency, we want to continue to improving upon that. And this is for all students, all students, the instructional, high-yield instructional strategies. And the reason why Kim and I met and we kind of, we chatted to kind of decide which one we wanted to focus on school-wide. This year, we picked distributed summarizing because that's one you can use across the content areas. And I don't know, are you familiar with distributed summarizing or what that means? Can you explain that very quickly?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so explain it very quickly.
So very quickly, it's just, it's the teacher teaching and stopping to have the students process instead of just going and going. You know that when somebody's talking to us, we'll remember what they said at first and then what they said at the end. But not necessarily what happens in the middle, which is majority of our teaching, right? So it's intentional, stops and questions and process in time with your students. We work writing in there too.
Yeah, we do. We do, we do. So again, I mean, I think you've probably heard that we have our reading coach, our reading resource teachers, and we're very strategic with where we place them. And writing in response to reading, because if you can write about something, then you understand what you're learning. You, you can't write about something you're not understanding. So that's why we have chosen for writing to be our focus. And again, expecting our expectations.
And goal number four is decreasing the number of chronically absent students from forty-five students to twenty-three students as measured by the Castle Early Warning System by May of two thousand and twenty. And so at the elementary level, we know that when it comes to students being absent and tardy, that a lot of times it's the parents. And so, because the students are depending on their parents to be able to get them to school or to the bus stop. And so anyway, what we do is we have, we work together with our school social worker and we send out letters to parents, we contact parents, we, you know, talk to the students. If we start to see that the students are missing several days, then we have conversations with them. You know, I've noticed that you missed, you know, some days of school, like, you know, at the very beginning, do we need to get you a bus stop or like put in a bus, you know, request or something like that to be able to get them to school. And so we have the classroom teachers that also, it's an expectation that they contact the parents as well. And again, it's, it's about relationships. And so making sure that the teachers really know the students and the parents because then, if the relationship is there, then the students will want to come to school.
For sure. Yep, for sure.
Okay, goal number five, we want to, oh, we had a total number of eight students for out-school suspension and in-school suspension last school year. And using our evidence-based PBS interventions, we want to either maintain or decrease that number. Some of the incentives and strategies that we use at our school, we have mentors. Was twenty-nine school staff, twenty-nine of our school staff are mentors to forty-five of our students. And that is because some of our teachers and school staff are mentoring more than one student. And mentoring is simple, it just, the student having someone else besides their teacher that they can go to and talk to and feel comfortable if they're, you know, have any questions or concerns. And so we ask those mentors to touch base with them at least once a week. It doesn't have to be a long conversation, just kind of check in, how are things going? How are you? How's, how's homework doing? And communicate with their teacher to know any of the struggles that they can work on with that student. They have an additional person on campus. We have small social groups, small social groups that myself and the behavior specialists do with sixty-four of our students. So we have eleven different groups going on there during the lunchtime so that they're not, we're not interrupting their instructional time. So we pull them during the lunch, they bring lunch into the room, they have lunch, and we do the work on small social skills groups. We also have on Thursdays, we are lucky enough to have Ms. Nina, who's approved by the district. She's a licensed contractor and she does art, arts, social groups with the students. So they're doing an art project while we're doing the social skills. And the students just love her. They, every year, am I going to get to be in that group again? She also goes, goes into our social functioning classrooms. We have four of those, and so she rotates with those and she goes into those classrooms and works with our social functioning students.
Students with autism. Thank you. I know Mrs. Stanford talked about our positive phone call home. We, one of our PBS, we, incentives that we have in our school is all of the classrooms have clip charts where they can clip up or clip down. Well, they have multiple opportunities to clip up. They can clip, they start on green and they can go from green to yellow, which they made a good choice, then to orange, they made another great choice. And then they're on red and they're doing an amazing job. Well, then they can clip up to the principal and that's when they have that positive phone call.
Well, then they can clip up to the principal and that's when that positive phone call goes home. So they love that, like when they come to our small group, I'm on the principal's necklace. So that's a great incentive that we have. We give out Eagle Awards if the student's making a good choice. Anyone on, any school staff can give an Eagle Award out to a student. Then they go into the bin and Ms. Stanford, Ms. Murphy pick out once a week winners for the Eagle Awards. And our cafeteria, we have a very small cafeteria. It gets very loud in there. So we're constantly, one thing about our school is we're constantly trying to come up with new ideas. I think sometimes kids get so used to certain things, they're like, I need something new. So we have silver spoons. If they, if they're doing well in the cafeteria, they get 15 silver spoons, their class gets ice cream. We just came together, leadership team, and talked about another new incentive because it's kind of a little bit difficult in there. We're doing this golden spatula table. So we're actually giving them opportunities to clip up. They have cups on their table where they can, they have three cups. They can be on green, they're doing good. They clip up to a red cup and their whole class is on a red cup. They're going to enter into a drawing to get a reward. And I think we're going to either do, they can either eat with their friend, lunch with their friend, or eat outside. So we're going to try that incentive. We do hallway ready, where so we radio into the front office. Mrs. Suri's class is hallway ready and then there's a drawing and they get this big trophy in the classroom at the end of the week if their class was hallway ready for the week. They love having that trophy in the classroom. Sometimes they display it in the window. And then as Mrs. Stanford mentioned, our quarterly celebrations that we have once a quarter just to celebrate that we are a PBS school.
And I just want to point out again, because I've worked at many schools in our, in our district and I've never worked with a school counselor and a behavior specialist, Mr. Matzko, that has been so dedicated to working with groups of students. 11 weekly social groups, that's a lot. 64 and every week, 11 groups of students. And it has benefited our students so much because it's those social skills that aren't necessarily being taught at home, but they still have to have them to be successful at school.
Sure.
And Marlo is going to wrap us up.
I'm going to wrap you guys up. So to leave a quote from John C. Maxwell, "The truth is that teamwork is at the heart of great achievement." I am so excited to be part of this team, but having just left the classroom last year, I can tell you how much I depended on the team in order to assist me as a teacher. And I'm even more excited now that I'm part of the team and I will be able to help other teachers this year. And that's truly what's happening at Trivago is teamwork. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, that's awesome. Great town.
Thank you.
For members, comments, questions?
Thank you very much. I've been there several times and the culture and climate is awesome. The kids are happy. Teachers are very attentive and engaged. So thank you for what you do and great teamwork.
Thank you.
Miss Kids?
Best practices, how much are you sharing that leap from the C to the A with your fellow schoolmates?
Well, you know, so here's one thing that's unique about our school and I've had a lot of people ask me that, how did you do that? So we do not have a revolving door of teachers coming out of our school every year. And I'm going to say that really is key. At Trivago Elementary, the fact that we've had teachers that have been there a long time is a good thing. Sometimes that can be a bad thing. But at our school, it's a good thing because our teachers have worked together, they have strong relationships, and they're comfortable with saying things like, my data says this, I notice your data says, says that. Why don't you take a look at what I'm doing in my classroom? So that really is the most important thing that you can do in order to make the growth that we have made in our school is that trust that the teachers have among each other, because we all have strengths and weaknesses. And being open and willing to hear, these are my strengths, these are your strengths, we both have weaknesses. That's really a great starting point. And we can do that because of the relationships that our staff have with each other. You know, besides all the other strategies, having Ms. Bisby come in and all of that, but it really does start with the relationships of the teachers and the trust that they have with each other. That's key.
Definitely.
Great, anyone else?
So I'll tell you, I went to the New Standards Listening Tour last night. And one of the things that they're trying to accomplish is making sure that parents understand the new standards. Dr. Savage and I talked about this earlier. I don't necessarily want to understand the new standards because we have you. And the, the level of professionalism and the, the deep knowledge that you illustrated for us here today, I didn't necessarily understand everything you said, but I know you do and I know that you're implementing it well in your school. So please bring more of your staff in front of us, Dr. Atkins, because this keeps us connected. It gives us as a team sort of a reminder of why we sit here and do what we do to support you, making sure our kids are getting where they need to be. So you guys are awesome.
And actually, I thank you too because I write down notes that I can take home and use on my grandkids. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. You have a great job.
Thank you.
I particularly like don't sit on your A.
Well, to that point, while we're bringing up North High, one of the things that we were looking at this year, we think we've done a really good job as a district with our DA schools, but where we can certainly improve our schools that are in Tier One and Tier Two. So, you know, Dr. Savage has helped us do that and we've got a really good, I think, academic team that's moving forward with some, really what we think is some learning and fruit in terms of things that some of our Tier One and Tier Two schools can do to improve the learning gains, the value that they're adding to students. So that's something that Dr. Spyro and his crew are working on and we'll keep reporting our progress as we move through this year. So I was able to get out to Trivago Elementary this year at the very beginning. I was out at North High and was wowed as usual. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to our principal, Debbie Diggs, to take you through their school improvement plan and highlights regarding their school.
Thank you very much. So I am Debbie Diggs. I'm also a very proud principal of my school, Melford Myers High School. I do have several representatives with me here today. So I have Dr. Michelle Stewart. She's one of my assistant principals, a data phenom. She's amazing with the numbers. So everybody always needs that in your back pocket. She's also very involved with attendance and in our Student Services Office, working with student behavior. I have Teresa Farland. She is one of my teacher representatives. She is this year serving as department head for ELA. She is also very involved with our PLC work that we do. She's going to be talking about both math and ELA. While the specific standards that the groups are looking at are different, a lot of the strategies that we're using on the PLCs to get those numbers and to get those gains are very similar. And then I also have Sadie. This is Sadie Rickenbach. She is one of my juniors. She has been very involved in the last two years, both when she was in 9th grade and 10th grade with all of our tested areas and is, is one of our kids that her teachers have just said has embraced the whole student data tracking processes that we're using. One of the things that hopefully you'll hear from when we talk about each of these different areas is our theme is about knowing the kids. You know, numbers are numbers and percentages. You know, they mean a lot of different things and you can work the numbers, I was math checks. So you can work the numbers a lot of different ways. But really, what it really comes down to in, in having success is knowing your kids. So whether we're talking about math proficiency, we're talking about ELA gains, we're talking about reducing out of school suspensions, it's really about knowing your kids and focusing on the individuals rather than strictly the percentages. So we are a back-to-back school grade of an A, so we're very excited to get our A again this year. The next slide you're going to see, I thought I would start with where we landed at the end of last year because this really was the starting piece of what drove our decision-making on what we were going to focus on this year. So this is the, all the different school grade components. So we, we really focus on the 10 cells that make up the school grade. And then as a part of this, also the school improvement goals. So it's all incorporated here. This is a chart that we use all the time. You walk in my office, the entire wall is this chart for those who've been at my school. We update numbers weekly, quarterly, and we really focus on where this is. So this is really the only chart you'll see at our school that deals with percentages as a whole. I'm going to also show you some samples at the end of what my teachers use where they focus on kid-by-kid data. Anything that you see that is in green, that meant that we met our goal last year. Anything that was in yellow, we didn't quite meet our goal, but we did increase. Anything that it was in red, we did not meet our goal and actually went down. And if there is no color, that means there was no change. We stayed the same. So during preschool, this is one of the things that we, we always start off with preschool, sharing all the end-of-year data after we get test results in with the entire staff. And so we look at this, we go through several activities. I do engage all 107 of my teachers in this regardless of what they're teaching because it is, it is all of our work. And then from here, we identify what really is standing out as successes and areas to go to work on. So for us, the reds, obviously, that's what we're going to be looking at for our goals. We noticed that the ELA, lowest 25% learning gains, that obviously jumped out at us. And then we saw specifically 9th grade, we had difficulty with 9th grade across the board in making just gains in general. So as Trivago talked about, it's not just your ones and twos getting up to proficiency. Obviously, we want them to do that, but it's also about not losing your fours and fives. North is a Cambridge A's school. We're very, very fortunate that a lot of our kids audition in, they have to apply in, they're coming in with already very high proficiency. North is one of those schools that we're, we're very fortunate. Our kids are coming in with high scores already. The key is for, how do you keep kids from getting complacent? When they go to take that, say, exam, if they've gotten those fours and fives every single year since 3rd grade, how do you keep them motivated to want to keep moving forward? So 9th grade specifically is where we decided to focus on for one of our school improvement goals this year. And then math proficiency, Algebra I, it has been an area that we've struggled with. Overall proficiency, we did increase. We did really, really well in geometry and that's been a trend over the last couple of years. Algebra I is one of those areas that we have just, can't seem to get our heads around. So that was another one that we decided we were going to tackle. Did, did much better with math L25 gains. Didn't actually hit our goals, but we did increase across the board. Science proficiency, there's a hot pink there. The reason it's pink, I didn't want to make it red. We did go down a little bit, but we still, in biology, we're the highest in the district. So our kids are doing really, really well, even though we did drop. And it's tough when you're already at an 82% or an 80% to keep, keep that going. Social studies, we had amazing gains in social studies last year. I think we went up 15 percentage points and had the highest gains. And that's the US history in that. So we were real excited about that one. Graduation rate, we typically are among one of the highest in the county. And that's a very exciting celebration. That comes from your industry certification. It comes from doing well in dual enrollment classes and also from passing AP exams and if you have IB, IB tests. So we've done pretty well with that as well. We did increase 27 points. The year before, we'd increased 38 points. We'd gone from a B to an A, so that was a year of celebration. We were obviously wanting to keep our A, super excited with increasing 27 points, not the 90-something that Trivago had. That was, oh, wow. I will tell you, it's tough, you know, once you're already at that, at that A, just to keep that increase and keep that push, we did, even, even though we, it's 27 points, we tied among all the high schools for the highest gains of all the high schools. That was another celebration for us. And then that last cell looks at two of our school improvement goals that we had last year. We focused, we went after the chronic absenteeism, which I think all the schools are focusing on. And then we also went after OSS. We just felt like there were too many kids that were missing instructional time because of, of being out of school. And so we really went to work on different processes and procedures and restorative justice and looking at alternative practices. With the attendance, we didn't get our 20%. We did, we did do a 7% reduction. And so over the summer, we did look at things that, strategies we thought that really helped us with that and then also opportunities that we needed to do some additional thing. Our OSS goal, we knocked it out of the park. We had a 60% reduction. I was, it was amazing. So that we were very, very excited about. So for the next slide, the five goals that we did wind up settling on, we are going to continue going after the chronically absent because it is a piece that we feel like we still need to, and in high school, it's tough, right? Because we've got 18-year-olds. We have kids who drive themselves. We have kids who are very creative about, you know, how, how they miss school. So it really is about.
We just heard about that.
Establishing those relationships so that kids understand the importance of being in school and just making engaging so that they want to be there and making it an exciting place. While for OSS, we will continue to monitor the OSS. The other piece we wanted to go after though was the, we just thought we had too many kids in ISS, spending the whole day in ISS. Bottom line is if a kid is not in their classroom with their teacher, they're not getting the same level of instruction. So really looking at strategies and ways of other things that we can get the point across to behave and yet still keep that instruction going without there being a negative consequence. The Algebra I, I showed you the data why we picked that. The increase in the 9th grade ELA showed you the data of why we picked that. This last one was one that we didn't pick. It was selected for us. With the ESA Federal Index, anytime you have a subgroup that drops below 41%, that is one that automatically has to be, be given to you. And so we actually have a gap in one of our subgroups and it is with ESC. We have a pretty large ESC population for our high school. And we've been hovering right on that cusp of like 41, 42. We've been right on that bubble and we did drop. So we have some specific additional things that we're putting in place for ESC this year. All right? So any questions about the goals? Okay, Dr. Stewart, I want you to talk about, oh, I'm sorry.
I just had, on your reduction of OSS by 60%, did you look at the correlation between that and the ELA lowest 25%? Is there any kind of connection?
Not that we were able to identify. We are, ELA data specifically has been off-the-chain amazing. The year before, we actually had a 19% increase in our L25 gains for, it was either 15 or 19. Math was, math was one. Was it yellow, 15 or 19? It was close to that. So we have not found a correlation with that. You know, with the OSS, it really was about doing a better job of monitoring internal procedures and establishing those relationships and getting to the core reason of why things were happening. And not just doing that knee-jerk, oh, okay, this is what you did, that's an OSS in the code of conduct. So, you know, you're out. It was really looking at the kid, looking at root causes and trying to identify what are some things that we can put in place to prevent the repeat customers, the repeat actions from happening.
It's just always interesting to me that it just seems like the ones that are always getting in trouble and they're academics, that there's a, there's a correlation there.
Yeah. Yeah. And I would agree with you there. If we were to look at our kids who are chronically, either chronically absent, whether just because they're just missing school or because they're getting in trouble, those are a lot of times your level one, level two. They're your at-risk kids.
Because they're missing instructions.
Right. So it's, you know, how do you kind of go about it as the whole child approach to try and get everything back in, in alignment to get them back on track to graduate?
Thank you.
Part of the ABC initiative, you know, attendance, behavior and classroom success.
Okay, Dr. Stewart's going to talk with you a little bit about attendance strategies and behavior. Okay, for our attendance goal this year to reduce another 10%, we're doing a weekly monitoring of data comparison to quarterly last year. I sit down with the social worker every week and go kid-by-kid. What we do is we separate our list into the over 10% who is chronic. We look at each individual one to see, will we divide up chronics into, do we have chronic with a cause? Because we have some kids that do have chronic illnesses and ongoing issues. But it helps to sit down week to week to identify those. We'd never really been able to identify those in the past. So we talk about that. Then we have our on-watch list from 6% to 9%. And we look at those kids to see if there's anything we know about those, pull some of their grades. Another thing, we look a little bit closer to the attendance. If they've missed a lot of days, is it five days in a row? If the doctors know, a one-time illness. Trying to be very strategic in assigning our mentors, that we're not just freely handing them out who are impactful. Because a kid that's sick five days in a row, the doctors know, they have hit chronic in first quarter, but that's probably not who needs the mentor. So we're trying to be very strategic in those ways and identify them a little bit younger. Our, earlier, our social worker had pulled the list of kids that were chronic last year and started meeting with them early as well. Any student that is placed on the mentor list, I meet with personally, pull their academic records, their attendance records, and we talk about it in great length. We really wanted to know our kids that were at the top. I don't think we had a good grasp of that last year when we got to the end of the year. The attendance contracts, that's what I just said, social worker meets with the ones that were chronically absent before and have been early identified to try and set some early goals for them to be there so we can hopefully get them off the chronic list this year. Or in turn, when they do hit a certain number of the nine in any individual class, they do get placed on an attendance contract. So it's really just a lot of time that we're putting in this year to really know the students that are at the top.
and being very strategic in signing mentors so we can have a bigger impact with more kids.
Can I ask a quick question? Your mentors, are they teachers?
They're teachers. So I send out the data every week to the whole staff, list how many have been added to the list, and it's a link to a Google Doc. So we, they will select, we try to encourage them to choose a child that's on their roster. It makes it a little bit easier because similar to what Trababer, they meet weekly, monitor the attendance, start to hold them accountable, feeling the need to, when they are absent, to let them know why they're absent. And in fact, I just got an email not too long ago, hey, so-and-so emailed me, she's going to be out Friday because she's already know she's been, you know, identified as a mentor, to really build that relationship. We really want to solve the root causes of why some of these kids are, are chronically absent. So that's how they get winded up.
Is it an expectation of most of the teachers that they will be mentors as well?
We send it out, we encourage it, required, no, we strongly encourage it. Because the reality is, is if you look at, if we meet our goal of 204 of the 107 staff, that's potentially two for every staff member if we assign every single one. And we make that very clear to them. But we also want it to be impactful. We want teachers that want to be mentors. So thankfully, we have a great staff. We have a large number that step up for and are willing to take on two and three kids at a time, and we get it covered.
We also have a, what I would call is an informal mentoring process. We have 21 different PLCs. If you're in a tested area, that's a no-brainer, you're on the tested area one. But for everyone else, we strongly encourage them to look at having attendance or the ISS, the behaviors, be their team focus for the year. And for a lot of them, they chose to have attendance. Being an art school, a lot of kids are there because of dance, because of musical theater, because of visual arts. And those kids, they have, they develop special relationships with those teachers if they're involved in intensive classes for three or four years. I mean, Sadie's a prime example of that. She's involved in multiple different arts pieces. And so for those, if you have like a performing arts PLC, they're working on attendance. And so they're looking for patterns and, okay, well, how come it is the kid is always here on odd day when, when I have my dance class, but they're never here, you know, on the, on the evening? So they're looking for those kinds of patterns. There are, again, kid by kid, identifying kids that they have that are assigned on their rosters and what can we do to have, to give them incentive to make sure they're here every day and they're treating every class as important. Also, in high school, you have huge athletics and clubs. So a lot of times, the mentor may be somebody who has a relationship with, with the kid in an extracurricular. And so a lot of times, you know, it's your coaches, it's your club sponsors. They're very quick, if they see a kid pull up on the formal chronic list, they're going to grab them right away because they know that they already have that relationship. And so when they start having those conversations about, okay, you know, why are you absent again? That can have a lot more impact than, than a lot of simply going home.
Yeah, I have two things that have come to mind. I'm a retired high school teacher and I know I often had either juniors or seniors first period when I taught here. And something that I saw, and actually, one of them was even in a senior class that I was teaching, they were always absent first period, which really was killing their grade. So I'm, do you see those kinds of patterns of something?
Absolutely. I don't think anything's changed, right? It's, it's, it's one of the high schoolers to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning and make seven o'clock class.
Well, and if we'd only start high school later, since all of the studies show that that's been for teenagers. But that's, that's another story. The other thing, and this, I hadn't thought about this for a while, but I know your football team's doing well, right?
It does.
Let's say that football player is absent on Friday. Is he allowed to participate?
Not at our school. That coach will bench him so fast. And we actually have. The head football coach is who, every kid who's late that comes through our door, the head football coach is who checks them in. And so a lot of our kids, they don't want to be late because they don't want to have to face.
And, and maybe that's, that's not something we have across the district, is it, Dr. Edwards?
Not that I'm worried.
You see a kid doing push-ups in the morning, it's a football player.
And you know what? That might be at some point, something we need to address because I think you're absolutely right. A good coach is a terrific motivator for being on time and being in school unless you're seriously ill.
I stand to be corrected, so Mr. Simmons is correcting me.
Half, half a day.
Half a day.
I was going to say, you have to be there by 12, I think, or by mid, you know, your half a day.
Got to get that sleep on football mornings, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And with the, with the first block that you're talking about, part of that goes to knowing your kids because when you start seeing those patterns and you start seeing patterns, well, then you flip their schedule around and give them something that they don't dare miss. You know, if it's a kid who's, I am here for theater, this is, I live and die for theater. Oh, guess what? You know how your musical theater class, your theater class first period.
Yeah, because I know that was a huge.
And you be strategic. It's about really trying to get incentives there that are going to have meaning for the kids, make them want to do things.
Yeah, that was a huge problem when I was teaching and, and, you know, part of it is, of course, it is so very, very early. But glad to hear you're on top of that as well and that your kiddos that, that are in sports or theater, like if they have a performance that night, that they know they need to get themselves to school that day.
And most of the coaches and teachers, they don't expect just the half-day. They tell them, you will be in school, you know, or you don't get to.
And that's great.
If you're too sick to come to school, then you're too sick to.
I applaud that.
Thank you.
Behavior strategies, as it mentioned there, our ISS goal for this year to decrease the number of internal suspensions. Some of the things that we're doing is a lot of it monitoring the data weekly of how many kids have been assigned ISS for the week and it gets added to the board, which you'll see later, our data board, to track it throughout the year and just getting to know the students a little bit better.
Blessings.
Trying to give alternative consequences. One thing that was heavy was no-show discipline. So they get a detention, not show, and then be assigned ISS. So that's not a good process. So we had to reevaluate that. So now we give them a second opportunity. The detention's a little bit longer, but now you have a second opportunity and it's working. They're showing up to the second chances. Another thing, traditionally, certain consequences might institute N ISS because of the level or maybe of what happened. But they don't have issues with the other teachers throughout the day. So we're kind of punishing the teachers for not having the kids in class instead of giving two timeouts for just that particular class instead of one and being gone all day. So we're trying to be very strategic in that sense of they're, they're getting the consequences of where the behaviors are happening to help decrease that. Another thing, certified teacher in the ISS room, we started that a couple of years ago, but have even upped it from there is we have some of our, we have really good teachers in the ISS room. This year, we have two and we split the schedule. There are probably some of our best relationship-building teachers in, in the school. So as the kids are sitting in ISS, they do get the mentoring, the counseling to find out what's going on. It's also a very structured place and they don't want to come back because it becomes a level of disappointment. They don't want to disappoint the people that are in there because they are very valued teachers in our school. So that has helped and hopefully will continue to help with the ISS. Early identification of the repeat visitors, same things with those relationship buildings of getting to know those kids so they don't keep coming back. Identify what are the root causes. Is it out of a particular teacher's class? Can we solve this? You know, trying to really dig in to get the behaviors to stop. And also a staff member mentor. The MTSS process, really trying to know those kids that are going through the process specifically for behaviors and trying to utilize what are some of the behaviors built into the MTSS process in recognizing those kids as well.
Other department head for ELA and the PLC facilitator. And I think that probably one of the things that have helped our department with our data is constantly knowing the data. And so we start this from week two, and we choose not to use the STAR, but we create our own benchmark. So we'll have one of the teachers in the, in the, in the PLC create this, this benchmark. And we're very careful. Once it's created, then we all, as a PLC, go over every question and we look and see, well, what kind of standards is it evaluating? How many standards on this benchmark is it evaluating? One, two, or five? And is it going to give us some good consistent data? And the results of that is what drives our instruction. So from week two, once they've taken this test, we know what we need to focus on. So we send out a Google Doc and all the teachers in our department or PLC for our results of this data. And we know, okay, what is our weakest area? What's our standard that we really need to hit? What's our second weakest? What's our third? And that's what we start with. And then we constantly evaluate, reevaluate. And that's what our PLCs are all about. Every time we meet, it's looking at our data, it's bringing new data and going, okay, what do we need to work on now? And from that, we create bellringers that we all use and we all share. And we take turns in the department creating different bellringers. And we, we only focus on one standard at a time. So it's not a bellringer with three or four questions that's going to cover a whole bunch of standards. That's just useless to us. We focus on one standard. And we, again, we compare as a group and has it been helpful? Do the kids seem to be getting it? Yes, then we move on. If not, then we keep on hitting at it. And that seems to be serving us very well. And we just consistently continue this throughout the year. And we make our way through the standards until finally the FSA in March or April. Would you give the next slide? I just want to show the magnet board. Yeah, because I think that's really.
Oh, yeah, go one, one more, then we'll come back. The, I'm going to have Teresa talk about the board, the picture that's on the left. This is a sample of what our magnet boards look like.
There you go. That's fine. The math and the ELA departments use these magnet boards. And there's a board with, the teachers are on it and we have magnets for every single student. And it's color-coded so we know what bucket they fall in. So at a glance, when we sit in there in our PLCs, we can look across and we can see, oh, wow, got a huge group in this yellow bucket down in two. And oh, this other teacher has, you know, last quarter she had, you know, the same amount, but now she's got very few. What is she doing that I'm not doing? So as a visual, it's easy for us as a PLC group to kind of compare. And then what we also do is we keep our own digital chart. And so with the, with the magnet boards, we move it quarter to quarter and from star to star. But with this digital chart that we all have, we can see across the board, well, how did they do quarter one? And then how did they do quarter two? So we can constantly check that progress. So are they making gains? Are they dropping? What's their PR score? So it's, it's easy for us to, especially when it's color-coded, to us to target students that are possibly having problems. We think, okay, why? And what's happening there? And what do we need to do then? What kind of differentiation do we need to, to apply to these students to get them back on track? Keep them following maybe from a five to a four, or to get them into that three bucket. Could you go back to me? Yes. I also speak to the spring boot camp. So we don't do this, but math has been very successful with this. They usually do it on a Saturday for four hours. And they do it as close to the exam time as possible. And they've typically been very successful getting like 200 kids to show up on a Saturday. Yes. And there are teachers who volunteer. And there are about 200 questions that the teachers throughout these four hours hit these kids with. And it's just been successful. The turnout is great and, you know, they've been doing it year after year. So it's been good for them. Let me also just data chat, since we're all about the data and we're so data-driven. The kids, and Sadie will speak to this as well. We have the bucket charts. And today, I just did it with my students, but they document and they keep tracking their own data. And then when they're sitting, recording their data, they compare with each other and, you know, and what did you get? What did you get? Oh, why did you get that? So that's valuable. There's a little bit of self-reflection going on there. And they track it throughout the year. And what this allows us to do is while they're looking at their own data, we can have these impromptu data chats with them as they're sitting there. And, and of course, the teachers at the PLC, we have our own data chats comparing students with, I do 10th grade, I'm like, hey, you know, but I'm having a problem with this particular student, 9th grade. How did they perform for you last year? So there's this comparison that's constantly going on in our PLC.
Okay, with the next slide, just a couple of things to talk about ESC. These are just some of our strategies that we're working on this year. We're trying to do some additional front-loading of background information for kids. We are doing a super-heavy focus on vocabulary across all four core areas. One of the things I've done too is I built a master schedule around ESC supports. I was a former such principal for curriculum, so I know a lot about building a master schedule. And typically, ESC is the last thing to schedule. And that's, it is the hardest thing to schedule because kids have such unique needs. And so we approach it with, we start the master schedule around the ESC supports that are needed. We have four ESC teachers that are dedicated to push-in, one per contact. So I have one who, they're all, they're all four certified in ESC, but I have one who's focusing just on ELA, one on math, one on science, one on social studies. They are a member of that content PLC. So they're actually very, very knowledgeable about what the skills are that the, that the course is working on at that time. And then we also brought in, we did a school-wide, for, for everybody who was in a co-teach situation, the district provided amazing support and they came in. And I had 20 subs in the building that day. It made me a little, made me twitch a little bit. But we were able to get every single teacher who's in a co-teach situation that district training in how they communicate and collaborate and work together with the kids. So those are some specific ESC needs. All right, and then we come back here. So Sadie, you want to talk about, what does this, what does all this data mean to you as a kid? Like what have, what have you experienced this part of some of this last couple of years?
So the bucket chart gives us like a visual representation of how we can chart our data and what's actually going on behind the scenes. Because sometimes we don't quite understand what's going on with the STAR tests or honestly, what our score is. But our teachers have done a really well job of helping us track what bucket we go into and how like we either want to jump a bucket or stay at a four or five. But it's our ultimate goal to like improve. And our teachers have these things called golden tickets. And if you stay within a four or a five, you are awarded a golden ticket, which can give you extra credit or a prize, which it's really good for one. You have to jump to a yellow and whatnot. But if you go down, you won't get a golden ticket. So like, you'd want to be like your friends and be like, oh, well, so-and-so got a golden ticket. Well, now I got to. It's kind of like, you know, competitive and whatnot because that's our age. But it also shows us where our areas of weakness are, which has to do with the green dot chart right below the buckets, which is a filtered system into USA Test Prep. And it shows us our areas of weaknesses by giving us yellow or red dots. And we have to work on those. And sometimes it can take up to like an hour and a half because if you have a red dot, it's going to take a really long time to get up. But once you get to go place the green dot on that chart, it's really rewarding because you finally like made a better.
Masters.
Yeah. Proficiency. Once you get the green dot, it shows that you are proficient in that particular standard.
And the ones who already have the green dot, they have you make, you go to 50% because there's a bar, it's from zero to 100, just to make sure that you understand the concept. And then you can place your green dot on the chart. And you can also see how other people are doing without knowing who it is. So it's anonymous instead of, oh, so-and-so doesn't have this many green dots, but this person does more. But you really won't know who has what as long as we're all being at the class together. But that's really exciting too because sometimes teachers will make it like a class goal to like achieve getting green dots first and they'll reward us with like a pizza party or something.
So in a way, we go after differentiation too when kids are just doing practice and then everybody was practicing on the same thing. Kids can practice on the skill set that they need. Because not everybody needs the same thing. And so it's, it's been a really, I think, effective way for differentiation practice. Anything, any questions that you have for us about our plan or things that we're working on this year?
Yeah, I just have one question about the algebra one.
Yes.
So what do you attribute that constant struggle in that to? Is it preparation before they get to you or?
For us, because we are an A's school and we have so many kids that are already very high, they're going into geometry, or algebra two as a 9th grader. We have a very small number of kids. We only have 100, out of 2,000, well, 1,900 kids, only 173 are in algebra one. And we have one section that's maybe honors, but most of those kids are double-blocked. So they're coming in to us. If they're in algebra one, most of them are a double-block kid, meaning they're a level one or two. And they've been a level one or two forever. So it, it, they are kids who just really struggle with math and always have for the most part.
Okay.
Because the, the other ones have taken it as 8th graders.
Right.
And it's, I mean, being, I was a former math teacher. I mean, that jump for a lot of kids going from 8th grade math to algebra, just those abstract concepts, it's, it's. it's, it's tough for a lot of kids. And they already, and for math, for whatever, for some, I don't want to say for whatever reason, there's lots of reasons, but it's, it is harder to get that confidence level. Once you've got a kid who gets low confidence as a late elementary school kid or a middle school kid, when they're coming into high school, that is half the battle right there. It's as a ninth grade teacher trying to help them figure out, look, you can do this. It's building that math confidence back up.
That's true.
The other, the other piece, I mean, she kind of hit on this with what she said about, about students, but the maturation rate and the maturity, you know, in terms of movement in, in the brain from being a concrete thinker to being able to think abstractly occurs at different rates. And something we have to, we really have to take into consideration. The other piece though, that we're being hopeful here and that we really have seen some substantial progress at our middle school level in mathematics. And I'm hoping that is going to, we're going to start to see the results of that in high school over the next, the next few years. Middle school overall, we're really going to focus on increasing the rigor. So I'm excited to see what Linda Mayer is going to do in that position. I mean, she really, really, really gets it. So I think that, that schools, and, and she's got schools identified, some of which are going to feed into North High where I think she can really do some good and North will benefit as a result of that in terms of the preparation of those students coming in. But we always have to remember when we're looking at Algebra I results at the high school level, you know, what, who's taking the algebra at that level? Because, you know, we're trying to differentiate and that includes when a kid is really ready to take something. You know, if they're ready to take it as a seventh grader or an eighth grader, then, you know, we don't want to hold them back. But if they're not ready until they're in ninth grade or even 10th grade, you know, we want to be able to accommodate.
So that goes along with, I wanted to compliment you Debbie on two of the things that you said. Knowing your kids is important and focusing on their individual needs. And then I love the thing about, and I, I know you've done this in the past before, but putting the kids in the class that they really can't miss first period so that they.
Thank you.
So that's good. Thank you.
Well, and you, you have probably picked up on this, thank you for mentioning that. But you see, you know, some of our most successful schools, they seem to really get that. And I, I, the whole relationship piece and individualized instruction. And, and that's something that you really can't fake. You know, it's just something that, that I think as we look to identify future leaders, we really have to focus on, on those that really value the importance of building relationships with individual kids.
Amen. Thanks for giving off.
And I would agree, and that's the whole child aspect. I think you really are hitting on the head with that because, and then I want to thank you for bringing in a student because that's the piece that we don't, we don't get to see all the time. And, and so thank you for, I know you didn't hate it to miss school today, but thank you.
She only missed.
I can write your note.
She, she missed first period, right?
Use the theater number, babe, rest in.
I know.
I have, I have a question. When you're scheduling to make sure they have the important classes, you know, first, do you have a large percentage of students with double blocks? And how do you keep that double block from being the first? I mean, that must be a scheduling nightmare.
It, you know, it's, some kids need that double block first period, right? So some, it really, it is so. We offer the different classes at various times of the day because each kid needs something different. Some kids are very alert and they are at their very best. And the parents and the kids will say, give me my four classes at the beginning of the day because by the end of the day, I'm just so tired, I can't do it. They need more activity. Some, they're comatose first block. So we know, give them, and, you know, in our class in the morning. So it really, with almost, with 1,900 kids, we have lots and lots of sections. And so we just try to spread them out throughout the eight periods to give kids lots of flexibility.
Our teachers are really good at identifying those kids. Yeah.
And you can move them around.
Really, yeah.
That's knowing your kids and the whole child. I mean, I think you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Just, just while they're here, just to brag a little bit on North High. As, as you know, I do school visits. And this year, something I've done that's a little bit different is that I've asked members of the executive team to go with me. So we, we go through kind of a rotation of who those people are. So one of the favorites is of course Dr. Desimores because she's in charge of the money. So when I bring her out to the school, she's very, very popular. But anyway, what Ms. Diggs did was she brought us to a chorus class.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Yeah, and I mean, so they brought us right, the teacher made us go right to the piano. And the kids surrounded us. And of course, they're divided into the different, you know, aritone, bass, et cetera. They were amazing, absolutely amazing. And I wasn't, you know.
This is totally a pop too.
Yeah, it absolutely was. So just some of the neat things and it helps to connect our executive team, I think, with the reason why we're doing this. So it gets them out of the building and seeing some of the amazing things that, I know you all do visitations. They don't get as much of an opportunity to do that. So we're trying to take advantage of that so they can get to those schools. But like I said, Dr. Desimores is like the favorite, I think. Because they can have.
A lot of them.
Yeah, I just took her out this week. In fact, and of course, every time, school principals are like, well, let me show you something.
We've been hiding for six months.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you too because I go out there quite often for different reasons. But I do believe that you definitely care about the children. And even the school shows that by, through their art, the stairwell. Everything about the school, you can see that there's, what's, what's taking place there and how much they are appreciated. And I enjoyed the fact that they know you and that you know them. To me, that's really important. So thank you for that.
I've got two things for you. Sadie, you're awesome.
Yes, absolutely.
Really.
Thank you.
I, I have to make a statement in a broader context about charter schools and vouchers because what I heard in you, Sadie, being competitive is not a kid thing. Trust me, I'm blankety-blank years old and I'm really, really competitive. And I hear, I heard competition in your statements today. Ms. Diggs, when you were talking about how you compare to the other schools across the district. And that's what creates excellence in a system is when you have leaders in buildings who are constantly trying to be better than each other and there's pride in that. And the final thing I have for you is your performance at the band thing. Tell me what the name of that thing was.
Well, the, it's, in Getting Ready for State, it's not like a specific name, but in Getting Ready for State, different schools will host marching band competitions to give bands opportunities to practice. And so Lehigh, they every year have one. Fort Myers every year has one. And so schools can pick and choose. And so schools from all over the state will go and they'll compete and get scored. So they're getting ready for state competition. And so each band goes and performs the, as much as they have ready. Like we still have one section that we haven't put in there yet that hopefully will be ready for Fort Myers. But every, it's all timed and with your costuming and effects. And so, yeah, that's, that's what we just had.
So I was wa, I, I happened to catch a clip of the video and I was watching it at home with my husband. And my husband was like, who's that, Ohio State?
Ah!
I said, no, that's a high school. He was completely stunned that it was a high school.
Thank you.
And the other thing is too, as competitive as you are, it was another principal in the district that posted it with just complete awe.
Jackie Corrigan, yes, she did. She posted the video and it posted, did amazing.
Yes, so good job.
So thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have capital project update. Ms. Eva.
We have had a Rick Parfitt sighting, so.
Welcome back to this side of the world. How's your jet lag?
Not so bad yet.
We have Ms.
I'm waiting for my slide advancer. It's right here.
Thank you.
Oh, you got it. All right. I heard Ken and I thought I had different Ken.
There's only one.
Good afternoon, everyone. I, I know you've had a long day, so I'm going to hopefully be short about this.
Okay.
We just want to, so this is the first time that we are going to do all three departments of what we are now referring to as a Facility Planning and Development Unit, which is construction planning and facility maintenance. So Dr. Atkins asked us to include something from each of the three departments so that everyone is up to date on what we're working on. So we'll start with Construction Services. We are, IDA, IDA, Ida Baker is working for funding approval for a centralized energy plant project. So there's not much to say except we're, we're in the funding phases of this project. And then as soon as we get our funding complete, we will start this project.
And you, I think we've talked about this maybe one. So we've talked about phase one and two, and this is the last phase of this project.
MM and MMM are our new high schools. We talked about MMM earlier. So you know that our groundbreaking is scheduled for the 13th. The site is in the phase, is being cleared right now. And they're actually getting ready to pour some foundation very soon. I'm excited because I get to go out and see the site tomorrow. The first time I've seen the site since they broke ground on it. So, and they have been touring other districts. I know they went to Sarasota and Manatee County yesterday to look at their construction, construction programs to identify some best practices. And there are some other counties that they're going to be going to visit, not only for the construction management course, but the other academies that they're working on. So they're trying to steal great ideas that somebody else already has and make them better. For MM, that is the middle school that is going to be located in Lehigh. That, that is scheduled to break ground this spring. We are in the final phases of the, of the architectural phase one as well as costing out the project. So you will see that very soon in final numbers.
And Madam Chair, just noting.
I'm sorry, yes.
New construction project East Zone, just bringing that.
Honestly.
Just bringing that here.
She asked us about that project. She's ready for it.
I'm, I'm ready.
She's very ready for it. So we're, we're excited. We don't have official date yet of when we're going to break ground. We're still working on some details that we have to do. But we are excited about it and hope, looking forward to a spring, a spring project. So we'll have two projects in the East Zone by, by this time next year.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the Carpentry Academy is something that, that we worked with the principal to do.
Yes.
Originally that was going to be Culinary, but with Culinary at, at really East. And also, you know, with the construction there at Lehigh Senior, you know, she's put in also Culinary there as well. So.
Well, let me just tell you, East Zone will never have enough food.
Barely not.
We can have it at every school and it will be.
Well, I, I, we're really excited about this Carpentry Academy. And I know that she has spent a lot of time on this. And as I said yesterday, they spent the day touring the facilities that they have at STC Northport and Manatee County. Elementary K, elementary, middle N, and this is the elementary and middle school in the Astero area. We have selected all of our primary occupants of this project. So we have an architect, we have a construction manager. And on Tuesday, you'll be approving, hopefully, the selection of the engineering firm for this. So our goal is to start designing this December 1. That's, December is our, is our due date. This, remember, this is the project that we are tied with Astero on. We keep telling Astero that we have a due date. Just today, I got an email from the principal there that I've been working with on their side of it. They're, we're meeting tomorrow. So it'll be the first time, Dr. Atkins hasn't even heard that because while I was sitting back there in the room, I was scheduling it. So we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about where we stand with that. But we, our goal is to, is to start this project in just a month and a half. So I'm not sure what we're going to find out with Astero, with the Astero project and the partnership there. As soon as we have more information, we'll let you know. The Portables project, this, so the MMM High School staging project, this is a part of the start of our, our building, the, the new MMM High School. We are going to be staging Portables behind Lehigh Senior so that they can start, they can start serving students next year in preparation for opening the full campus when it is completed. And then as we talked about at last month's meeting, we have five, area five schools that we've selected for this year for the canopy additions. Benita Springs, Harnes Marsh, Jake Holland, English, Okamic, and Sunshine.
Is, I, my mom's is not on the list. I thought they were.
No, we, remember, we talked about last month that the problem with Lehigh Middle is that their, their portables sit on their field space and their court space. And so if we were to put canopy, yeah, if we put canopy on the space, we can't, we're making it permanent. And that's not the ideal place to have portables. Secondly, with the construction of the new middle school, we're hopeful that we won't need those portables long term. So one of our evaluations, as we selected the five schools that we would do this year, which is what we have budgeted for, was how long would those portables have to stay there in the future? Because they are, it is an expensive project to do. And if we're only going to need it for a couple more years, it may not be the best. And if it's in a location, the portables themselves are in a location, we don't want them to be permanent, then we certainly don't want to do something that would make them permanent.
And the capacity of MM?
Uh, our prototype middle is, don't quote me on this, I think it's 1,200.
I think you're right.
Um.
I'm pretty sure you're right.
So it's, it's, it's our prototype middle and I'm pretty sure it's 1,200 students.
I really, you know, when I've been out there, both, actually Nikita Watson was the first to show me the, the portable situation at Lamb's. And then I was back out there with Mr. Gibson and now we have more portables. There's another issue there too, that why I really would not want that to be a permanent site. It's because of where that's located in the school, it really creates a bottleneck when they're coming in from the outside, coming in from the gymnasium, coming in from the other hallway. And it's just, it wouldn't, I would, if we were to do something more permanent, I would really want to look at another spot to do it. So just, that's another caution.
Do we ever think about adding another building on the side of some of these middle schools? Or even at Riverdale or some of the schools that are just chocolate block right now?
So as we are evaluating additional capacity, wherever the additional capacity is, we always look at what, what it would be to add a new building to it. That's why we added a building at Lehigh Senior this year. It's certainly a solution in some cases. It doesn't work in every case because of the core facility capacity. So it depends on what the capacity of that core facility and how much, how many more students they can hold in the campus, given their administrative and especially their cafeteria use. You don't want cafeterias to be running all day long. So there's only so many students they can hold and how, how much of a turnover they can have there. But yes, it's absolutely something we evaluate. And in some cases, it's a very good alternative for us.
I hate to be a time Nazi, but.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, I was trying to be short.
You know, we're running, we're running a little bit late. We haven't taken public comment yet. And we still have a statutorily required presentation by Mr. Parfitt, so.
So we have Hyde's Elementary. We're getting ready to do the ADA playground that will be done this, this Christmas break.
I just have one question on that.
Yes.
Not, actually regarding that, but we received an email regarding Tanglewood's playground not being, they aren't able to go on the playground with their, the wheelchair. Did anybody else receive that?
Yes, we did. And the ADA, we had an ADA evaluation of that. We are, in fact, that they, that email is accurate. We do have an ADA issue on that playground. And we are evaluating what the best alternative is for that. So I'll give you an update at the next meeting on that one.
Thank you.
Roofing projects, North Fort Myers has started. Cypress Lake is in process. We have our traffic studies that we talked about last month. And now onto maintenance. These are really HVAC projects. Colus Elementary, East Lee, Hancock, and Tanglewood. These are, these are HVAC projects that are either underway or in process, or underway or getting ready to start. Our window replacements, we continue with Lehigh, Lehigh Senior and with Cypress Lake. And then we're also working on the Technical College Fitness Area Assistance Program at Cape Coral. And then the roofing projects, I'll let you read the, the board. But the, the great thing we are finding on our roofing projects that we are undertaking with the Halfpenny Sound. sales tax is two things. We are, we are improving conditions on the campus, which is always something that we need to do. Many of these roofs were beyond the point that they should have been replaced. But internally to the building, as these projects are being done, we're doing them in a way that create, that reduces the, a heat island effect. A heat island meaning we're, we're using a lighter, more reflective material. So, rather than absorbing light, or absorbing light and heat like a dark roof does, they're reflecting light up. And so, our buildings are actually reducing their, their temperatures and our need to provide additional air conditioning. So, we are not only taking care of our buildings in a better way, but we are able to recoup some energy costs on it. It's a really great project.
On the Cape, that Mary piece, is it an outbuilding to replace the Portables that they have, or?
What? Yeah.
Isn't it moving inside, right?
Yeah. I'll give you, we'll bring more detail on it. If that's a project you want, we can bring more detail on it for next one.
Okay.
Planning, we have two projects we're going to talk about. The first one is the proximity plan. Everyone has heard about the proximity plan, and, and Dr. Atkins keeps telling us we have to get moving on this. So, there is a proposal out, an ITN right now, for a contractor consultant to do this project. We are, next week, we will get the results. The due date is, I think, Tuesday or Wednesday. So, by November, we'll start it, we'll, we'll evaluate the proposals, and January is when we are hoping to get this kicked off and running. So, we are very close to kicking off proximity.
So, in the meantime, not to belabor, but in the meantime, we've actually directed staff that we would like to see some phasing in prior to full implementation of proximity. There's some things that we think we can do to increase transportation efficiency and look at our school start times. So, that's something that they're working on as well, which will happen actually prior to full implementation of a student-based, or student proximity-based assignment program.
Yeah, Dominic told me, he's on vacation this week, but he told me, tell you all, that when you think about proximity, even though we're starting the project, it's going to take about two years to complete the actual consulting of it. But in terms of full implementation, we're four to six years away because of grandfathering and the rest of it. So, it's-
It's crazy.
Yeah, it's, well, because of grandfathering.
Unless you want to as a board-
Right.
Unless you as a board want to say, "We're not going to grandfather." But, but if you say that, then think about it this way. I've been at, at Golf Elementary School. I'm super happy at Golf Elementary School, but now you're telling me that I can't go to Golf Elementary School, and, and you're making me go to Diplomat Elementary. That's what you face as a board. So, you can make that decision, and we will discuss that, you know, along the way. But if you think about the grandfathering issue, then they, you have to think about the student as they're in elementary school. That's the one you have the longest period of time because they're K through 5.
It just sounds like, how many kids do these people have that it's going to take only six years?
Well, no, it's just, so if you're-
Well, I'm not excited.
If you're a first grader or a second grader-
Not 46.
Oh, I thought you said 46.
No, 46.
Thank you.
Now, there are things that we could do. Like, like, for example, what we're finding is that if you do have some outliers, let's say that you've got kids that live in Charleston Park, and they're assigned to Tree Line Elementary School. That's a very lo, long distance. You know, we, we are committed to, to making some contacts there and trying to, you know, work with parents to try to get them to a closer school on a one-to-one basis where you see where they're really living far away from, from a school, but still they were able to pick that. So, there are some things that we, that we can do to mitigate the impact of those long-distance travels. So, even though full implementation, four to six years, we can see substantial results in less time than that.
Can we put that down as a workshop?
Yes.
We will, and we will have many workshops. I think, once we hire our consultant, we definitely should have a workshop with our consultant and let them have, discuss kind of what your driving parameters for the project are. But I think it probably waits, probably moves everybody to wait for the consultant to come on board because they probably need to hear that message as much as anybody.
Because, yes, and I totally concur. Why, why this is important for workshops and briefings, we also need to make sure our community is with us lockstep.
Absolutely.
We want to bring somebody on board, actually, at the start of the new school year. I mean, I mean, January, so, to really, to work in community engagement, particularly related to proximity, because we think, you know, we really need to make sure we're communicating well with our community about this particular project.
In fact, that's the reason this project will take 18 months to, 18 months, a year and a half to two years because of the communication, community engagement piece of it. Castaldi, the other thing we want to update everyone on was, as you know, we have two Castaldis out, one for Fyncombe Park and one for Cypress Middle. And the state came and visited us. So, we sent up a draft in the summertime. The state sent us some comments. They came and visited us in September. We have since made additional changes to the original report, have resent them, and we are expecting, never say anything with the D, with DOE, but we are expecting an answer before the end of the year. So, hopefully, very, very soon, so that the start of January, start of next year, we can get, going into, into the planning for these two campuses.
Great.
Great. Questions, Colin?
Thank you.
Ms. E. Bott, when I happened to run into you down in the district offices one day, you told me that you don't see yourself as a planner. You see yourself as a-
No, I see myself as a planner.
I know, but you said something about a community improver or something?
Oh, oh, I, I told you, asked me, oh, okay. So, my personal mission statement-
There you go.
I have, I don't, I never ask, I never have a job description on my, on my resume. It, my, I have a personal mission, and that is to build better communities, so.
I just wanted you all to hear that because that's one of the, the community engagement, and you're working with the various municipalities and county. I think that's a wonderful attitude to approach all of that with. I applaud you for that, so thank you.
Yep. Right now, we're doing it through schools, so. And schools are, you know, it's, it's when you divide schools away from the communities that we have, in my opinion, as a planner. Yes. But thank you, and I hope you like this format better. We'll, we'll keep giving short snippets about what each of those three departments are doing so that everything can be kept up to date as you move forward and you know what's going on.
Thank you so much.
Before you leave, are there any questions on the change order memo?
I think it's great. No, thank you, thank you.
I was just going to say, you, do you do the change order?
Oh, yes. Are there any questions about the change order memo?
This is just materials in general, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Ginn, is there a question?
Nope, she just answered.
Fantastic.
One of, one of the things that, that comes up, well, actually, you guys were trying to talk about this when Frederick Ross and Brian talked a little bit more about some of the potential, if you're, if you're awarding more of your contracts to some of your small, smaller businesses or minority-owned businesses in their community, one of the potential issues that can come up is they may not have the connection to the suppliers like some of the big contractors can do. One of the things that we can do, though, is use this direct material purchase as a school district, be able to purchase those materials at a lower cost and without the taxes that a corporation would, would incur if they were to make those purchases. So, that's one way that we could continue to work on our, our small and minority-owned business plan, and without it causing a cost increase to the school district.
That was one of the things that was mentioned in the finance 2.0, and that we just went to, to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parpet? And Mr. Savage, or Dr. Savage, sorry.
So, do we say Konichiwa?
Konichiwa.
Konichiwa.
I learned to use chopsticks.
Oh, I'd lose weight if I did.
That's right.
I have fingers.
Because they publicly shamed you, yes, for pork. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome back.
Thank you. The briefing on the best practices for school security comes as a result of the Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool that has been utilized here for the past several years. And it's a comprehensive tool that looks at a number of different things from what we, we don't always think of, of safety, because I think we get focused too much on, on what we see in the news, and, and we're, we're driving our safety to, to areas that, that we probably should be looking elsewhere. But, so, we're looking at best practices and a, a comprehensive assessment of how, how we deal with safety concerns at, at the schools related to health, safety, discipline and conduct, facilities and equipment, safety programs and training, and of course, school climate and community outreach. So, when, when we hear the, the report on best practices for school security, it's not all about locks and, and hardware and things like that. It encompasses all the other departments and divisions in, in the school district that provide that, whether it be technology services, facilities. Those areas are also important to this, this comprehensive approach. And I think that, that we're on, on track with what we, what we started a couple of years ago, even prior to my arrival, and we've continued that approach, building upon a, some strategies that look at that overall comprehensiveness approach to safety and security. One of the things I heard this morning, or this afternoon in an earlier presentation from North Fort Myers High, which I thought was impressive, because we don't think of this as much when we talk about safety and security, but I thought it was so important what they talked about. For example, in their in-school suspension, that early identification of, of repeat violators, and that it's, they described looking at root causes and interventions. And these are, these are violence prevention mechanisms. These are, are, are things that we as a school can use, a school district can use for violence prevention. The, the school climate is probably the best way that we can look at preventing violence at a school. And I think with, what they describe, what they're doing, is exactly what we need to be doing when we talk about safety and security, when we talk about violence prevention. Now, safety and security, again, is, is more encompassing, and it deals with other aspects of safety and security. But that's what we hear today in the news so much, is the violence piece of it. Safety and security also relates to, of course, fire safety, physical safety. And again, th, these are areas that we're going to continue to have, have concerns as technology evolves and some, some of the best practices are revised. When I see things in the news that relate, a week or so ago in Volusia County, an individual walks into a school, into a high school, walks into a classroom, no less, sits down in the classroom because he, he was intoxicated, but he told them later that he, he was testing the security of, of the school. To, to look at that, and, and I'm not criticizing a school district for, for what they do, because they're, they're all different. Schools are all different. Our approaches to them are all different. When we look at the, the target hardening of our schools, it's an, it's an important part of it, but it, it's a, a big concern because we have schools, again, you've heard me say this, that are built probably in, Fort Myers High used them as an example in the 40s to, to schools that were built last August. So, when we look at that, that piece of it from target hardening of our schools, it, it becomes concerning. One of the things that we're looking at from the strategies, and I think it was mentioned to you earlier today, of course, we've, we're continuing to upgrade, working with technology services, camera technology. It's, that, that's a big facet. Locking systems from a hardware, a, a hardware or target hardening part of our schools. And of course, the other, other added technologies that, that we're seeing from early alert systems, early notification systems, or even tip lines. And again, it relates back to that school climate. If, if a student feels comfortable in reporting to a school administrator, a school teacher, that they have a concern about another student, this is what we want. This is what's going to, this is what's going to prevent violence in our schools. And this is where we're, we're continuing to work. Some of the fiscal impacts, of course, and timelines, you may have heard, heard this morning, will continue. Some of these things probably have been and should be part of incorporating them into standing budget items. And I know from a technology standpoint, they have. This is, whether it be a refresh on, on cameras and that type of technology. But when we talk about that, that piece of it, the technology piece, it's forever changing. The, the technology in these areas of safety and security are continuing to, to change. Just as an example, we hear so much today about vaping in schools, and it causes our schools a lot of, a, a lot of time and, and our law enforcement, a lot of time and concerns in these. Technology's evolving to this. And, and we don't want to, we don't want to go out and buy something to say that we're doing something, for example. But the technology we've looked at, for example, in that, there, there's companies that sell devices that, that, that smell vaping, or detect vaping, or something like that. But they're not proven. They, they haven't been established as any type of best practice. So, again, we're looking at those, always looking at those types of technologies. And lastly, the, from a safety and security standpoint, we've revised, along with Will Rothenberg from HR, the, the Joint District Safety and Security Committee. We've had it, and we've recently revised the approach to that committee and how they will function and bring information on a, on a district level that will bring concerns to us related to the safety and security of whether it be school teachers, other staff, the tauk and spout folks that are involved and things like that. So, we, we've looked at and have revised that committee and looking forward to that providing us additional information as well. And I'll entertain any questions you have.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, I said, thank you, and I loved what you said.
We got back today.
Well, you know, and I, and I, you've all heard me say that in the past, when we talk about violence prevention, that they're, the, the way that we're going to prevent, we're, we're not going to prevent, necessarily be able to prevent every school fight, every playground fight, those kinds of, that type of, of incident. But the, the concerns that we hear about in the news, unfortunately, that, that type of violence, we can't prevent.
I will, I will, I just want to say something really quick. I met some people in Orlando, and they were speaking about you, about how you were the expert here in Lee and Collier. So, I, I thought that was really great to hear that. So, you're well-respected, and I really appreciate you being a part of us.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
What's the opposite of Konichiwa?
Konichiwa.
It's the same thing.
Konichiwa.
Well, Ohio's good morning.
Yeah, it's the same.
Ohio.
Ohio is Konichiwa.
Good afternoon.
It's the same.
Ohio is hello and goodbye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment.
Chris? Yes, yes, thank you. Well, school board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting for members of the public to address the board concerning any matter on this briefing meeting's agenda. The time permitted is three minutes per speaker, and I have five blue cards. When your name is called, if you come to the podium over here, please, you have three minutes in which to speak. The first person is Jessie Wittler.
She had to leave to pick up her kids.
Okay. Gina Heck.
She also had to leave to pick up her kids.
Laura Mitchell.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
My name is Laura Mitchell. I'm a resident of Gateway, and I'm speaking to you about MMM school. It literally is in my backyard. I truly believe there should be more public schools available in Lee County. It saddens me when I see our children housed, or should I say taught, in trailers, because there just isn't room for them in schools we have now. I'm excited to see what the future holds for MMM. I know that probably sounds ridiculous because I know that there has been a lot of bureaucracy. I'm in the Agnolia Lakes. I'm in the Amalia Lakes, so I know that there's been a lot of people from Amalia Lakes who have had some things to say. I'm not one of them. I just want that to be known. The name of it is not one of the most important things to me. I want that to be known. Although, the community does want a voice, and that is very apparent by the results of the survey. As I've listened to your statement, I would like to be heard about the input from what I've heard from you. I don't believe there's going to be a change in Gateway Charter Schools. My daughter goes to Gateway Charter School. There are tons of kids who go there from all over Lee County. And they go there for many different reasons. I don't see there being any reason why there would be a change in that. Could my daughter go to MMM? There's a very good possibility in that. The student survey, if you're going to do a sur, survey, make sure that you don't limit it to just two questions. Be inclusive, include all four names, and also include on it, I don't care. I don't care what you name the school. I did continually hear the need for community input.
Yeah, thirty seconds left.
That doesn't matter. Make sure that you do IP address, make sure you can include different factors with different, they can include different email addresses, make sure you do that. Race shouldn't be an issue, politics shouldn't be an issue, none of that needs to be an issue in this. Safety and security is a big issue here. I want to know about...
Time is up.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Email us.
Yes, please.
Next person is James Pennington.
Three minutes, huh?
Yes, sir. I started, when you start talking.
(laughing). I give you a chance. My name is James Pennington. My name sounds familiar to you, it's because my brother's a teacher at Estero High. His name's Dave, and my sister-in-law is Norm Pennington, research, media research specialist at three of the elementary schools here in Lee County. I've been up since four o'clock this morning, but I think the name of this thing is important. And I don't know your name, but I would nod my head, yes, 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 because I agree with everything you said as far as a person that had impact in this community. I've been a citizen here for thirty-five years, and I've watched this community grow into what it is today. I also have two boys and I have two granddaughters who potentially will be students at this high school, and they have my heart. And speaking of heart, there's Harts Dairy started out in this community years ago, nineteen twenty-eight, and the grandson of the founder, Thomas Hilton Hart, was involved in the community like you wouldn't believe. He exemplified being a member of this community, and I think that that's what we want to do with the name of this school. He built a family business, Harts Dairy, into one of Florida's premier dairy companies. Harts Dairy was founded in nineteen twenty-three by Hilton P. Hart, his grandfather. Tom Hart also served as president of Florida Dairy Products Association, nineteen sixty-nine, was inducted into the Florida Dairy Hart Hall of Fame, nineteen eighty-eight, also employed hundreds, maybe thousands of people in this community that eventually became pillars of this community, and Mr. Hart was the foundation that these pillars were mounted on. So he also was involved in the establishment of YMCA and the Boy Scout Student Council. I'm a little nervous. The Boy Scouts in this community, and he was also a dedicated member of the First United Methodist Church of Fort Myers. He served as chairman of the Finance Committee, Committee and Chairman of Administrative Board. He served three decades as Director of First Federal Savings, which is now Fifth Third Bank, all right? He exemplified community, and he is everything, and his whole life was about Fort Myers.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Yeah, I have no vested interest in this other than just trying to get the name right. I've been up since four o'clock this morning. I put in my little vote, I did a little survey and stuff, and I didn't, I was probably winning one vote for it. But I wanted to get this right, and that's what I'm here today. So I think if you want to get back to the heart of the matter, I think Thomas Hart High School would be a great name for this high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last speaker is Carmen Salome.
Good afternoon, my friends, and thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to just share a couple of concerns that I had, or just a couple of points that I wanted to make. First of all, on the collection of the suggestions from your website, there was no language on that webpage that said, "Vote as many times as you like," because I think if there was, you would have clearly seen that the last three names would have, that those numbers would have been maybe as high as the top one that was collected. So some people knew that, others thought, "You vote and you vote once, like you're supposed to." The second thing I wanted to mention is the name Edison. Please don't forget that several years ago, there was a community college here with the name of Edison, and there were some issues with that. So I wanted to point that out, and I would hate to see a lot of money go into naming the school Edison and then find out we have to put a lot of money into it to change it. So if you take those two out, to me, you only have two choices to look at, really. It's MLK or Mistral. And for me, she represents the Americas, and the children that are in your school system are children of the Americas. I, I also wanted to make a, a point real quickly about the emails that you have received and maybe some phone calls you are receiving. I wouldn't count those as votes. Those are folks lobbying you. You've got four choices and they're trying to encourage you to choose Mistral. So I saw that as that. I think as leaders, you need to look at the future of where the school, the population is going. You see now that the population is already at forty, maybe forty-two percent, and it's only growing at leaps and bounds. We want, I've heard the term, a world-class education system. Choose a name that's world-renowned, renowned, and that is what I think of when I think of Mistral. I also have been receiving some interesting emails and messages, and I just wanted to share one real quickly with you in that I've been receiving people telling me, "This is not a foreign country." So for some reason, they see her name, or they see that name suggestion, as a foreign name or a foreign country name. And to that, I would like to say that there are names like Giovanni, Giovanni, a beautiful Italian name, Salome, a Spanish name from Spain. And we, yeah, we were born here in the America, right? We're, we consider ourselves American, and so do those children that are in schools with names like Fernandez and Diaz and Ortiz, okay? Those are, those are American children as well. So that was all I wanted to share, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's the other.
Thank you. So that's not easy to get up there and speak to the school board, so thank you for taking your time to come out. And I really do encourage you to send the rest of your speech to us via email, and we'll get back to you with questions, but really, really appreciate your feedback and your input. The next item on the agenda is, excuse me, board member comments with the reminder that we have twenty-one minutes left. So I can't believe I'm saying this, if you want to push your board reports off till Tuesday night, I'll give you that pass with Madam Chair's approval.
And that's fine with me. I just do, I would feel remiss if I didn't mention an important figure in America, Elijah Cummings passed away today, and I will mention more about that on, on Tuesday in my comments, but I just wanted on the record that we recognize it, and also George Mayo, who was an influential person in education here in Lee County, also passed this week. All the rest of mine, I can, I can bring it up on Tuesday.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
No comments today. I'll save them for Tuesday.
I'll make time real fast. I just want to remind everybody that the Buckingham Exceptional Center is having their barbecue and this Saturday, and, and also bring food, bring food, canned foods for their food pantry. So I just wanted, and that's from eleven to two on Saturday, so that. And then I just have to say real quick on the Harts Dairy to the gentlemen, they also supplied all the milk when I was, I grew up, that was our, the milk we drank. So I'm just going to tell you, that was Harts Dairy, and I, actually, we had tours in elementary school at the farm, the dairy farm, so just want to add that to that, so.
Where, where was it exactly?
I remember it was somewhere, it was somewhere, we went, it was, it was actually, we actually went to the, you know...
The farm?
Yeah, as a field trip. Yep. So, not the farm, it was where the, the plant, where they, where they did the milk and everything.
We can have the conversation with the meeting.
Thank you.
I have that question, though.
Okay, well, we don't, we don't converse with the public during meetings, sorry.
That's it, that's all I have, just...
That's, that's my fault, I was like, "Where was it?" And that's all I have to say. Afterwards, I'm going to find out, out of curiosity, since I was raised on a dairy farm in New Jersey, I'm just curious. And I'm done. Ms. Jordan?
I haven't talked to you. All right, I have a question. There, a concern has been raised about, and I don't think, I think you're going to explain that this is not an actual concern, that we shouldn't be surveying eighth graders because eighth graders won't actually go to that high school. That's not true, right? Because we will be staging, our current eighth graders will be staged at Lee High and they will be the freshman class of MMM.
That's correct.
I just wanted to address that. Very good, or can I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, no, wait, wait, Dr. Atkins.
No, I'm good.
(laughing).
I'm good, thank you.
I just have one more thing real quick. The taco fest that we went to, the, we, I think it was Culinary One, and apparently they, they don't have adequate stove and stuff, so can we look into that?
I'm working on that.
So they can eat tacos?
Yeah. And, and, so there's an extraordinary story behind with the teacher chef, and so I'd like to talk to you online, offline about that, but I just want to bring that out to everybody's attention because it was very, it was fun.
Ms. Fisher?
And Saturday morning, I won't go to Buckingham because I'll be at Trafalgar Mill for their thirtieth anniversary celebration.
Oh, yes, for sure. That's good.
And there's fall festivals at two schools this week, so go by and visit your schools for Fall Festival. Albert is one, and I think Manatee Elementary.
Farncombe Park?
Farncombe, I'm not sure. That's not in the zone.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Any items for go to the order? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Any, any objections? Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.